And I what?
New bag?
No, super old bag. Super old bag. But I've been working out of a client's office for the last few days. So I needed to have a bit of a mobile.
Take your office with you?
Yes.
All right, geez. All right, let me make sure then. Okay. Erica, you ready?
Aye.
All right, turn on your mics. Okay, we call this meeting to order at 7:01. Call the roll.
Mayor Fahet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Here.
Councilman Dion.
Here.
Councilman Lamas.
Here.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Okay, please stand for the invocation by Vice Mayor George Santin.
Lord, source of all peace and healing, we come to you with its broken hearts grieving the senseless violence that shattered a lot of our communities and steals our sense of security. Where hatred and division have taken root in our society, we ask you to restore a spirit of unity and compassion. We pray for the perpetrators of these terrible acts, and we ask you to bring comfort to the family and friends who are grieving the loss of loved ones. We pray for the safety of our children, students, teachers, and all who work in our schools. Guard them from harm and replace their fear with power and peace. Inspire our leaders and public officials, including the city council, to seek justice and peaceful solutions that protect all of us, not just in Miami Springs, but in our society as a whole. Make us instruments of peace and strengthen our hearts to stand up against injustice and violence. We pray for you, divine mercy, to fill this great land of ours and banish violence swiftly from our midst. Lord, let us not be overcome by evil, but help us to overcome evil with good. Amen.
Please remain standing and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay, welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, September 22. I want to just give a shout out to Mr. Angelo Caruji, who is here from Natalie Millian Orvis' office, our county commissioner. So thank you for being here. Okay, so we move on to item four, agenda and order of business. I've got a few things, if you guys will allow. I would like to take 5C, the presentation by FPNL, and put that after open forum, because that way they have an opportunity to hear the concerns of residents before they do their presentation, and they can address the needs as conveyed by the resident. I would also like to take 5D, which is an update by the city manager on the upcoming repairs. JC, if you don't mind, I'm going to move that to your update, the city manager update, at the end of the agenda. So that would be 14B. And then lastly, 10A on the consent agenda, the resolution related to Senate Bill 180, because that is an item that involves, you know, a potential lawsuit and what our role is in support of that or otherwise. I feel like that should probably be in new business rather than the consent agenda. So does anybody have any issues with those? Does anybody have anything else that they would like to move around? Or an item from the consent agenda that you'd like to move?
I'd like to set a motion to move the items.
Okay, so that motion will be to set the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of the agenda as just described, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, so we move on to awards and presentations, and we will start with 5A, National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So I am going to, so everybody knows cancer is a leading cause of death for kids that are from infancy to about 15 years old. There's been progress on some types of childhood cancer, but the cure rates for many forms still lag behind. And there's a trajectory that shows that there's like increased incidence of childhood cancer, and sometimes people give to a lot of different cancers, and the childhood cancers don't always get the same kind of research funding. So I think it's very important that we, as a city, support this. So I am going to read a little bit from our proclamation that we have here, that the city of Miami Springs recognizes the devastating impact that the disease of cancer has, not only on those children that are diagnosed with cancer, but their entire support networks, parents, grandparents, loved ones, friends, just the entire community is affected. And the city then recognizes this impact and what it has on the members of our community. And so as a result, I, Walter Fahet, Mayor of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, as proclaimed here. So thank you, guys, and thank you to the city for doing this proclamation in support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you. All right. Oh, I would love, I didn't know we had somebody. In that case. Before, would you like to say a few words, please? And then we'll go up there and present this to you?
Yeah.
Go, step up to the mic and please, yep, say your name and...
This way or that way?
Any which way.
Hi, my name is Esther Reynolds. I'm a director with Mystic Force Foundation, and this is Cass, one of our supporters as well. We appreciate so much the support that this city has always shown us. And for this Saturday, we have our annual gold ribbon parade. Keep an eye out, we'll be starting at Nicholas, going by Jackson, and going by, what's her last name? Joe DiMaggio. So it's the biggest parade, gold ribbon, to bring awareness to everybody for childhood cancer. This is Childhood Cancer Month. I was at an event the other day, and they were celebrating Breast Cancer Month, and we were like, can you just hold it until October, please? I was a little upset, my husband had forced me to leave, but it is, bringing an awareness and having all your support means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to go ahead and stay up here for this next presentation. They took the wrong one. Grab them. They took the wrong proclamation. They took Twice as Sweet.
And Liz won't fight.
Don't let her out of the building. Gotta watch these people. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Now we're ready. So I am going to ask Ms. Liz Santin to come on up to the podium. I'm going to have you speak in a couple of seconds, but I did want to just read from this proclamation. Twice as Sweet, cakes and cupcakes, has been an integral part of Miami Springs' community since opening its doors in 2016 and serving residents with delicious cakes, cupcakes, and sweet treats for every occasion. For the past decade, Twice as Sweet has been more than just a bakery, but a cherished part of the community. Elizabeth Santin, who we know, are you guys related? Elizabeth Santin, a proud resident of Miami Springs, the owner of Twice as Sweet, has dedicated herself to creating a welcoming small business that reflects the one character of our city. So Twice as Sweet is proudly celebrating its 10th anniversary as of Saturday, September 13th, 2025, I was there, marking a decade of sweet success in the community and the city of Miami Springs. So I, Walter Fahet, Mayor of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 13th, 2025, as Twice as Sweet Day. So, a few words. Here, come on up. You don't get to hide behind the podium.
I get nervous at these things. I can only say thank you to the support that the city's given me. Without everyone coming back, I've seen people from their beginning of their journey, from either having their first baby and doing a gender reveal, to having the 10-year birthday. I've seen everyone go from their first engagement. I mean, I've seen everyone's, I get emotional, because they're not just friends anymore, they've become family. And I'm telling you, I love this city. So thank you for all your support.
All right, wonderful. All right, let's take some pictures with the council first. All right, we'll sit down and we'll have you take a picture with your family. Okay, thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to open forum, and then we will have FPNL do their presentation. So I have got the list of people that signed up for public comment. I will just remind everybody, you have three minutes, it'll be timed by our city clerk. When the alarm goes off, your time is done, and the mic turns off, and whatever didn't get said should have gotten said. So please be mindful of that. Please remember that it is one-way communication, we are not supposed to respond, this is just an opportunity for the public to talk directly to us. And as always, if you ever have questions, you could reach out to any one of us on the council, or to the city manager, who represents the city administration, with any concerns that you may have. So remember when I call you up, please state your name and address for the record, and we will start off with the esteemed Michael Gavila.
Michael Gap, Michael Gavila, 68, uh, sorry, no, 223 North Royal Pointeana. I'm going to suggest that maybe we should move the council meetings to six, to make it easy for staff who'd be here all day. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, next up, Brad Curtis, River Cities Gazette. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brad Curtis, publisher of River Cities Gazette, 1229 Westward Drive, Miami Springs, Florida. And as you know, the River Cities Gazette has served Miami Springs for 50 years now as a family business. I take over as the publisher here. And, you know, in August, we submitted a proposal for the information pages to transition over to the website, rivercitysgazette.net, which is the future of the local news here with Miami Springs. The River Cities Gazette is going digital onto a website, you know, online publication. So I was just trying to get everything in order and trying to figure out what the next step is to getting those information pages transitioning over to the website. Thank you very much. Happy fall, everybody.
Thank you, Brad. All right, next up, Arti Viscano.
Good evening, everyone. Arti Viscano, 1238 Meadowlark Avenue, 40-plus-year resident of Miami Springs, former business owner and former FPL employee, worked in the underground in the Miami Lakes area. I'll start by saying these addresses, which is the 1,200 block of Starling, Redbird, Dove, Plover, 11 and 800 blocks of Plover, 800 blocks of Falcon, Olive, Ran, Olive, Oriole, Raven, Cardinal, Esplanade, Flagler, Whithorn, Rosendale, Melrose, Navarre. What does this mean? What am I getting to? This is the first part of the program the FPL did, their underground. The underground that they did in these areas, they put the transformers in the alley. And that now they started the second program, which is the North Bird section. They're having Erby, which is their contractor, go through our, go through our area and do a presentation and give out a flyer of what they're planning on doing. However, the twist is now they're telling us that the transformers are going to be placed in our front yards. Now, I don't see how they can do that. I'm sure such a crucial change to the plan must have gone through our city council, and it should have been through a vote, a city vote, for approval, because nobody really has the right to give up the residence, many of them here that I've asked to come and speak, a chunk of their property is actually, turns out being 234 square feet of your property. By the time, you can't put any plants on the side of them for a certain distance, 234 square feet. In a time that we're always asked to give more and more and pay more, now they want to, for some reason, change the program to the front of. Now I hope that they're not using the excuse that our alleys are too narrow for their FPL trucks, that it makes it easier for the FPL trucks to drive through the front. Of course it is, they're driving down the street. However, these alleys in this section that I'm talking about are probably the widest alleys of Miami Springs. Our garbage trucks, which are exactly the same size of the FPL crew trucks, drive through these alleys twice a week with no issue. For 50 years, the FPL trucks have driven through these alleys with no issue. So there is no issue with the width of our alleys. Plus that, our alleys are maintained by the city, most of them by the residents, because they care and they go back there and cut it. But the city also goes and maintains it by putting rocks down and cutting grass and stuff like that. Sorry, I got a lot to say. So I just, I just, I don't, I want to understand why the change.
Thank you, Arti. I tried giving you a signal, but... Okay, next up, Richard Gluckstad. Please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Gluckstad, 6300 Northwest 39th Terrace. This is, I'm going to read an email that was originally written to you, the city, including the city attorney, still won't answer me in writing, and also the city manager will not answer me in writing. I get verbal decrees by His Excellency, however, this lady won't answer me at all. She won't even acknowledge what she told me in the hall, that she's working on it or whatever. Senior Center difficulties for Richard and Amparo Escudetto Gluckstad, that's my wife. I quote, "A legal opinion. A city can legally require a state-issued photo ID to establish residency for specific municipal services, as long as it does not make a state or national ID the only acceptable form of proof. Requirements must be flexible and non-discriminatory. While a city can mandate proof of residency, the requirement must be flexible enough to accommodate residents who may not have a driver's license or other government-issued ID. This is required to satisfy the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment, which prohibits discrimination against citizens and non-citizens alike." We have, we seem to have met the requirements up until we were asked to leave the senior center. It's all about getting kicked out of the senior center. On August 29th, when Angie Aggie informed me that we no longer qualified for services based upon the information we had provided. At no time did we provide false information for over two years. In our original application, we were never asked for any supporting documentation. After two years had expired, Betty asked us for some legal documentation that would allow us to remain active participants in the center. We did this, and we're told that that would be all we needed. Then last month, we were asked for a driver's license only, that if we did not do this, we had to leave the center. We explained our dual-residence situation, and that for tax purposes, we could not put our VG family home as ours, even though my wife provided a substantial sum of money to Monica, my daughter, to purchase the home at 6300 Northwest 39th Terrace. It is in our daughter's name, Monica Gluckstad, rather than ours. Both sides of our family, including Amparo and I, have lived there for over 40 years, while it was still in the names of the Escudetto family. My wife, two daughters, and I have lived there for extended periods of time as well, twice. We go there almost every day to spend family time with Monica and our grandson. They come here and Dorell also quite frequently. Could I have another 30 seconds, please?
You have six seconds.
Pardon me?
You have five seconds.
Five seconds. All right, so basically, they threw us out, they also threw out a homeless man.
Thank you, Mr. Gluckstad.
In a van on somebody's property.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, and even 30 seconds is too much.
I know, sorry, we have to be consistent.
Also, one other thing here, at the top, this is a violation of the First Amendment, this word impertinent. It's ambiguous, and it's unconstitutional.
Thank you.
And I'm going to give this to the city attorney, so she can revise it.
Thank you.
Don't laugh, this is a serious matter. You think everything's a joke?
Thank you, Mr. Gluckstad.
This is for the city clerk.
Thank you.
You're a real one.
You may have a seat, thank you. Okay, next up, Osvaldo Arbello. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, councilman, my name is Osvaldo Arbello, 1190 Starling Avenue. Unfortunately, I am one of the residents that will be receiving a transformer in front of my home. The rep that did come to our house to give us the explanation did not clearly explain the whole process, in my point of view now, knowing what I have on out. I did ask at the time if it can be placed in the alley, he said no. He did say that I can landscape around it, that he promised, and now reading the brochure closely, that's not a true statement. So again, coming up with all these variables we have now, it would be my expectation that the city would know what's going on with all these, with all these changes, like already mentioned to the plan. We take a lot of pride in our home. As a matter of fact, my last time I was here in January, we won Yard of the Month, so I do take a lot of pride in my home, and my concerns are for insurance, for property values, and for aesthetics and safety at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Juan Cabrera. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Juan Cabrera, 1120 Redbird. I have the same situation pretty much, and nobody really explained to me, or the guy that came by, that there was an option, or he didn't know, or whatever, that I could have the transformer placed in the back of the house. And I agree, one of my properties is one of the ones that I agreed to have the transformer in front. However, if there is a way this thing could be put in the back, I don't care if they put the shrubs or whatever they want to do to it, I just want, I couldn't care in the back. The front is a whole different story. So that's what I'm here for. I'm for the underground 100%, however, I don't care for it in front of the house. I really didn't know that I could do it otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, ooh, I'm having trouble reading this, is it Curtis Patacon? All right. All right. Did I, I didn't even come close. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, neighbors, friends, and council. How are you doing?
Hello.
I have concerns as well with what's going on. Longtime residence, I live a couple doors now from Artie and Jill Viscaino. A lot of our neighbors are here. A month ago or so, we started getting business from FPL subcontractor for us. We had two choices, concrete power poles or a box in the front yard. Kept coming back, explaining different reasons, logic, whatever it might be, trying to get us to buy into the idea. He said he needed three people on each side of the block to agree to do it. He couldn't get the three people on our side or the other side, as far as I know. How I break it down, okay? This will bring and commercialize the look of Miami Springs Residence Blocks. On our block, we already have a water power station on the corner with all these boxes and, you know, on the corner of the first block in. Looks like hell, okay? These green boxes somewhere on Westward, it looks like hell. The green box, yellow stickers, and black numbers on it. Nobody wants that crap in their front yard. Who would want that in their front yard? Okay, we don't have big front yards, and to put power units in our front yard takes up at least a third of our front yard, between the space, the distance, the rules, et cetera. I would have to actually move a fountain and readjust my entire landscaping, all because utility company has decided to put a power box in my front yard. And I'm sure others would do the same thing. All utilities and after, and other equipment should not be forced on private property. Should be always in alleyways, easements, or some cases, the swale. This would include water, electric, fire hydrants, et cetera. Nobody should ask to take away part of your yard for their convenience. City council, we're looking for you to help prevent this from happening to our neighborhood. Most of you guys are local residents. I'm sure you're just concerned as we are. We need to help our Miami Springs Council in stopping this intrusion of our property. Seeing a transformer box in a front yard would actually give someone second thoughts as looking to purchase a house in Miami Springs. It kills the curb appeal. There's no doubt. You kill your curb appeal, and it's overkill. Real quick, I got another one right here, if I can find it. Chat GPT. Cons of that box: aesthetics, access requirements, outrage repairs, safety concerns, high voltage equipment, kids climb on the box, power is ever damaged by a car, lawn equipment, or flooding, possesses electrical hazards. Some FPL boxes are noisy, and they can emit humming or buzzing sounds that drive you crazy. Space and placement issues takes up a useful part of your yard. We don't have big yards, unless you live on Deer Run or Honey Lodge. We don't have huge yards. We don't want it in the yard, obviously. Flooding and weather exposure. In short, the whole thing's a mess. Put it in the alley, put it, I don't know, but it should not be in our front yard, not to mention you want it 10 feet from the sidewalk. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Jill Viscaino.
Good evening, everyone. Jill Viscaino, 1238 Meadowlark Avenue. Third-generation resident here. My grandparents started, are living property here, built a home in the late 40s. I am a public education teacher. I work at Springview Elementary. I've been here for 26 years at Springview, 10 at another school in another area when I first started. My main concern with all of this is everything everyone else has said, what they're taking away from our yards without our knowledge, without our permission, and without your knowledge, basically upfront as well. The safety of the children, these boxes. It's just like having a transfer up on a pole. They catch fire, they leak, they can explode. There's all the different things that can happen. My main concern is the children of our community. They don't know that it's not something they can play on or can't climb on. You can't plant around it. You can't do any of those things. So that's, you know, basically my concern. Taking away the aesthetics, as everyone has said, the amount of property. When we already have alleys that are very well-maintained, very well-driveable, as everyone has said, the large trucks go through our alleys several times a week. There's already space back there for these things. Why does it need to be in the front yard? Why does it need to take up that space? So those are just, you know, additional concerns. But also, everything the same that everyone has already said, you know. We can keep repeating the same thing over and over and over, and, you know, it's just, we all have the same concern in our area. If the majority of the project has already been done in the backyard, why now in the front? Why are we being given misled information from the contractor, from Erby? You know, all of the same things, over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Louis Gomez. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Louis Gomez, 1216 Meadowlark Avenue. So basically, this guy, Erby, the contractor that's been going around, has also been lying. He also, in a way, mentioned that if these transformers are not going to be accepted to be placed in the front yards by several of our neighbors, that FPL would automatically put up new poles on the swale areas directly in front of our properties. So that's in addition to the concerns mentioned by several neighbors. These transformers, I mean, they're complete ice wars. Number one, they have bright labeling on them. You can't conceal them. You can't put hedges around them. There's a large space, distance requirement, that would also affect from the driveway usage of some properties. If you want to use your side yard just to place a small jet ski in the side yard, some properties do have the ability to do that. There are some properties that have variances grandfathered in for that purpose. By placing these transformers in the front, it directly impacts a lot of properties in the area. It makes no reason for having these in the front. We have large ample alleyways in the back by the bird section. This is not something that, I don't know how it came to mind, by FPL. Basically, it's the same thing. These belong in the back alleyways. Oriole has them, between albatrosses, I've noticed, between albatrosses and laneway, there's a couple done. Nightingale has one in the corner, property in the alleyway. So there's already a significant amount of work done by FPL, putting them in the back. We need fair treatment. If we have the alleyways, it should be placed back there. We understand if there's no ability to do so, then you deal with that block independently. There are certain sections that have lakes, bigger yards, different criterias that they may need to be placed in the front. Then you deal with that independently. But the ones that have alleyways, keep them in the back. You know, not too long ago, the city of Miami Springs took pride with an ordinance with the recreational vehicles. And this was part and done because of the ice wars that they represent in the front yards and in different areas of properties. This is worse. This is a box that cannot be moved. A recreational vehicle, you can move it. You could enforce it. You could go by there and give, you know, people citations for not moving the recreational vehicle. It even went to a point that there's golf cart community and chats that mentioned the deal with the golf carts, and a lot of residents were concerned about the ice war that may present in the front yards. Here, you have a real front ice war. You need to help us. You need to help the residents take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Angelina Gomez. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Angelina Gomez, 1216 Meadowlark Avenue. Not to sound like a broken record, but I'm also here to speak about what the FPL is doing. I believe that what they did was sneaky, and they did not present all of the information. I have lived here for 17 years, my entire life, and I'm very grateful to live in a community where I can bike around or drive around and see the scenery, and walking out from school, see all the nice houses. And while aesthetics may seem like something small, it's the difference between Miami Springs and any other community. If we wanted to live in Hialeah, we would move to Hialeah and pay much less. But we chose to live here in Miami Springs, in a nice community with nice people around and with nice houses. We recently found out that even though we did not elect for it, and even though we did not select it, our house may be chosen to have a transformer out in front. This is also a safety concern. I have a very small, curious dog that likes to get mixed up in things, and I'm concerned for my dog's safety. There are a lot of children on my block that may play around on the transformer. And what I'd like to say is, why wasn't this information presented to us earlier? If we had known about this information, we could have fought it. We could have come to a compromise. But there are alleyways in the back. If we had known about this, we would be able to talk to the FPL, find a way to put it in the back. But instead, they did not present all the information, and they're putting it in the front without our consent and ruining the aesthetic of our neighborhood. I think it is important to find a compromise and to fight this and to keep Miami Springs the way it is, as a nice neighborhood with greenery out front the way it was intended to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelina. I just wanted to chime in, because a couple people have mentioned the fact that it may sound repetitive. Please do not feel, I prefer redundancy over ambiguity anytime. When it comes to residents conveying their concerns in open forum, do not be discouraged if you think that you may be repeating what's already been said. It's important that you do so. So please do not be discouraged by that. Next up, Kevin Mullay.
Yeah, most of you guys know me, Kevin Mullay, 1281. My residence, Mullay Law, 205 Cross Street. I know most of you my entire life. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for the work you have been doing as this new council. As a resident, does not go unnoticed. We do appreciate everything you guys have done and everything you will continue to do. I'm going to echo everything that's been said here today about these FPL transformers. But mainly, want to point out just one big thing. It's no secret that the foot traffic in Springs happens in our front yards, right? That's where we catch up with our neighbors. On the 1200 block of Heron where I live, you'll see me in the front yard with my kids. If it's soccer season, we're playing soccer. If it's baseball season, we're playing baseball. We're out in the front yard a lot more than we are in the backyard. It's also no secret that bad things happen to good people, right? These transformers in the front, regardless of how remote or small the risk may seem, it still is a risk. So I think here, as a city and as a council, if we have an opportunity to mitigate or manage that risk by putting these transformers in the alleyway, and we fail to do so without it coming at a premium, I think it's almost reckless if we don't make that choice. Once again, echo everything that everybody's been saying here today. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I know you guys will make the right decision when it comes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Ariel Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Ariel Rodriguez, Meadowlark Avenue. So I just want to make it clear, I'm here in my personal capacity, not my official capacity. But I want to say a couple things that, I first learned this about six months ago. And I will say, in fairness to FPNL, the person who came out to me was very courteous, professional. I have nothing bad to say about him. And I do want to commend FPNL doing this project, because I think we're all in agreement. If we could get underground lines, we want it. However, there's a but. The two buts, I will say, is number one, it would be nice if FPNL was here six months ago, when I first got contacted, rather than someone knocking randomly on my door with my kids and my dog barking. You know, they're giving us all this information all at once, and, you know, we're trying to make a decision, you know, right there and then. Again, I didn't agree to anything. I told the person I didn't want to do it. And I know they've tried to come to my house a couple of times afterwards, but, you know, we're all busy, we got work. And, you know, it would be nice that they were here much longer ago. But I want to make sure that everyone understands, we have our property rights. FPNL cannot put a transformer in our front yards unless they compensate us, or we agree to an easement. And I can tell you, our block, we're not going to agree to it. I even asked FPNL, you want to make me an offer, make me an offer. But of course, they don't want to. They want it free, they want it cheap, and they want it easy. And, you know, I feel that I had to come here today, because I don't want people to think that they're being pressured, FPNL, that if you don't agree to this, we're going to put a 20-foot pole in front of your front yard. Well, that's not necessarily the case. Now that we're hearing, and again, when I first heard from Artie that they put these in the alleyways, I didn't know that six months ago. The way the representative talked to me was, well, we can do it in the back. It's not feasible. So now that we're hearing that they could do it, I just don't understand why we can't do it for the rest of the houses that allow for it to be done in the alleyways. Obviously, the people on the lakes, the people on the corners, we understand that they're going to have to live with the consequence of having a box in the front. But for us, especially Meadowlark, I just would be left alone. I don't want the knock on the door anymore. I don't want to be bothered. I already told FPNL, I don't want it. And I hope the city council hears us and decides that, let's put the pressure on FPNL to put it in the back. It can be done. It's not a possibility. But we're going to need action from everyone, including this council, to put the pressure on them. Because I feel they're putting a pressure on us, and especially elderly people, who don't know their rights in this city. And I don't want an elderly person to feel pressured that, I better do this, otherwise something bad is going to happen to my front yard. So everyone should understand their rights, and hopefully talk to an attorney or talk to people. But don't give up your rights just because they're pressuring us. Because they can't touch our property unless they compensate us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, Mike Morales. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Morales, 1139 Robin Avenue. Once again, I'm here because of the same situation, FPL. My whole thing is that, like everybody said here, they want to put that box in front of the yard, okay? Those poles are in the alley. Artie, how high are the poles in the alley?
35.
35 feet. How dangerous are those power lines? There's power going to go through those boxes, right? What happens if somebody backs up into that? Explosion, power, loss, hit, something happens, electrocuted, somebody's going to get killed. Now, FPL is here, they're going to tell you all the boxes are safe, the box is secure, nothing's going to happen. If it's so secure, then why are you moving it? Leave it in the backyard where it belongs, you know? Leave it in the back. We don't need that in the front. Like they said, it's going to, you know, make our property look ugly, okay? We're giving them 200 square, 200 feet of square to put that on, and we're not getting compensated for it, okay? I don't want to get compensated for it. I don't want it in front of my house to begin with. It's in the alley. It belongs in the alley. It should stay in the alley. That's where it's got to be, okay? A lot of us here don't like the idea. I don't like the idea of putting a pole in front of my house either. You know, Miami Springs is what Miami Springs is, because it's beautiful. We spent a lot of money to keep our property in good, nice shape to have a box in front of our yard. You know, anybody turns a corner, anybody hits the pole, anybody hits the box, and what happens? We lose power anyways, okay? And then God forbid, somebody gets killed. So I'm totally against it. I think a lot of people are totally against it. I don't think we need it. It belongs in the alley. It should stay in the alley, and that's pretty much it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next up, Louis Semino.
Good evening. Louis Semino, 1141 Starling Avenue. I'm also a third-generation Miami Springs resident. The child cancer, Tom's here. He lost.
Grandson.
Gets a little emotional. He lost a grandson to childhood cancer. They have the Chad Tough Foundation. Also, Oscar Ortiz, who's a Miami Springs resident, the Sebastian Strong Foundation. I just wanted to throw that out there, just so everybody knows. There's some other people that have gone through that as well. So I'm going to go a different route, same thing, FPNL thing. The city planners, back in the 40s or 50s, actually had the vision to create alleyways to put utilities and garbage and stuff in, so we didn't have to put that in the front of our house. Okay? We're taking that vision, if we allow this, and throwing it out the door. I think that was an incredible vision that they had at that point in time to create those alleyways. The other thing, the first project was done, it was all in the back. I've talked to residents, friends that have it in the back, and they're like, I don't understand. Why aren't they putting it in the back again? There's no reason to put it in the front. It's ridiculous. All the same things everybody says. I actually have no problem if they want to take a piece of the back of mine, and I moved my fence a little bit, to give them the room to put it in the back. That's me personally, right? Not everybody else. And then lastly, I have, I believe it is in the code, or it was in the code, that you cannot put hedges or plantings in the swale area of the front yards. And if I'm not mistaken, that has to do with visibility issues. I know you can't have your hedges. You can only have your hedges a certain height or anything, but I believe at one point in time, or there still is, it's against the code to actually put plantings or hedges or anything in that swale area. And I can give my 45 seconds back to Mr. Viscaino, if I'm allowed to do that. Am I allowed to do that? You can pause it real quick. You can come back up and talk for 45 more seconds?
No, I can't.
Yes, no? She didn't stop it. She didn't stop it. It's, hey, he gets 45, he gets 45.
Thank you, Louis. No, they are non-transferable, these seconds.
I can't yield my time back like they do in Congress?
I was going to give you a credit because you shouted out Chad Tough, and you did the public service announcement, and Sebastian Strong at the beginning. So thank you, you do get those 30 seconds. Okay, next up, Jessica, is that Garcia? Okay, I'll let you say that. Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Hi.
Hi.
Jessica Gaviria from 78 Canal Street, Uncle Hank's Hideaway. I'm here today to see if there's any possibility that we could find a way. We have a beautiful mural at our restaurant, and recently the city has asked us to remove it, which we did, and it looks ugly now. I'm trying to see what can we do. I know that up to the code, you could, you could only have up to three colors. But honestly, our goal is to show like more beauty in the city, and the mural was, had nothing bad, it was done by an artist, and we're trying to see what can we do to keep it going, to like put it back up. I think you guys have been to Uncle Hank's Hideaway, and I'm sure you've seen it before. It's a beautiful art piece, but they're asking us to remove it. So I'm here today to see what can I do to put more beauty into the city. That was it.
Thank you, Jessica. Jessica, make sure, have you reached out to the city manager?
Yes, yes. It's been a back and forth. Yes. Oh, you're the city manager, I'm sorry. I'm thinking you're licensed, he sounds very, sorry. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Last, certainly not least, Carlos Limpui.
Good evening, everyone. We live in Miami Springs and we're proud of it. My name is Carlos Limpui, 181 Hammond Drive. There's a lot of talk about these transformers in Florida Power and Light, and I don't mean to diminish it. However, I am very grateful because on Hammond Drive, the longest street in Miami Springs, not long ago, we were provided with underground wiring cables without any cost to homeowners and without any cost to the city of Miami Springs when this program came, and I'm very grateful. Anyhow, I've come to speak regarding something else, and that is that the Miami chapter of the National Association of Realtors has opened up a 50,000-square-foot new office building here in Miami Springs, and our mayor went to speak to them. And I'd like to address something that is a huge injustice. And it's one that has, it's pernicious, it's awful, and it's 50 years. And I would like someone to follow my crusade. I've been involved in real estate since I was 12 years old. I was a title clerk as a volunteer, where we would shuffle dusty abstracts in preparation for title attorneys that I worked for unpaid. But I learned a lot. And then at 14, I bought my first house in Washington DC. I've been a property owner since. When I was 18 years old, I took a course at GW, and I was able to become a real estate salesman, then a broker and a business franchise. Back then, if you wanted to do a listing, there were only two ways of making a listing. There was an open agency or an exclusive agency. But property owners, real property owners, held on to their right to sell. What we have today and needs to be addressed, and I'm in a crusade now, three congressmen over 50 years. I have gone to Washington, where my home is. I went last week to Doral, and I have an appointment to see Mario Diaz-Bilard. We must bring an end to this exclusive right to sell listings. They're pernicious, they are awful, and there are many homeowners who regret signing these listings because the realtors never get out, or the property owners can't get out of these agreements, where they give away, it's a grant, where you give the exclusive right to sell to realtors, and if they're dishonest, you can't get out of it. And I know of one that walked away from a closing with 1.5% of a $3 million property, that's $45,000 for his having presented one hour. It's an abuse. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings an end to open forum. And now we will pick up with our presentation from Florida Power and Light, presenting an update on the underground power line project, which I'm sure there's a lot of people that are interested in hearing what you guys have to say.
Hi.
Are you guys going to have a PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you want to, you can give us a second to just dim the lights, turn on the projectors.
Sure. I'm just going to introduce ourselves.
Sure.
So, good evening, my name is Addis Corillo, external affairs with Florida Power and Light. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having us here to address the Storm Secure Underground Program. Again, I'm with FPL, offices located at 4200 West Flagler Street. So I think the best way to move forward tonight, since there were so many concerns, is perhaps to start with the presentation. And Sulema Chavez is going to introduce herself and do the presentation, then we can take up the questions and address as best as we can. So I'll transfer it over to her.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll do the quick presentation. My name is. Yes. My name is Sulema Chavez. I am the Day County Outreach Manager for Florida Power and Light. A little bit of background on FPL, we serve about 12 million customers, we have 6 million active accounts, and we go all the way from Pensacola to Miami, and we cover about 43 counties. Our leading cause of outages in throughout other regions is vegetation. Here are some pictures from Hurricane Irma and Hurricane Ian. That storm took us a very long time to restore power because vegetation fell on our poles and all over our lines. We needed to get cranes to get all these poles out of the backyard, and it took us about two weeks to restore power in Day County. Our program focuses on the neighborhood lines. The lines that you see all the way on the left, those are transmission lines, they go from state to state. Then you have the main feeder lines that come out of substations, and then from there, it branches out into neighborhood lines, which are the ones in the rear of your property that you see. We call them laterals. Why go underground? Well, data have shown that it's 50% better during the day-to-day reliability, the restoration, it's faster, and we reduce interruptions due to vegetation. How do we choose a city or a feeder in order to put them underground? We have some criterias that are approved by the Florida Public Service Commissioner. The power lines perform during previous named storms, so your latest hurricane, how your lines were performing, your outages due to vegetation, and your day-to-day reliability. This reliability could be that it's a pretty day, you're in your backyard, and a squirrel gets on the overhead transformer, and then you're without power for six hours. These are the, so these are the maps from Miami Springs. The areas in blue was already completed, we started in the city back in 2019. And then you have the red, which is what's currently in outreach right now. So these are, when you see the Arby people going around and introducing themselves, these are the areas that they're working on. In 2026, we already are going to start construction in the green areas that you see, those two areas. This is outreach, what's currently happening right now. They're knocking on doors, they're, you know, sending you emails, phone calls. This was already completed from 2020 to 2025. And this is what's going to come next year, starting 2026. So the life cycle of our project is about two years. We start with a conceptual design, then we go into outreach, that's when you see the COS is going around, knocking on doors, calling you, sending you emails. Then after we secure all the easements and everything that we need, we go into final design, after we go into permitting, and then in construction. This takes about two years if we don't have any hiccups, any big hurricanes, or anything like that. What do we need from the residents? From the residents, we're going to need an easement, and that's not for every property, and you're not obligated to sign for an easement. This is an easement that we get every three to four houses, depending on the design and the size of the house. Then you're going to need to sign a junction box agreement. This is just an agreement that says that you are okay with those undergrounding your service from overhead to underground. What do we need from the city for them to approve the permits, especially the directional boring that we have for our primary cables, and potential easements, use of easements like in a park, or maybe the city owns a piece of land that we might need an easement there? What is the cost of this program? There's no out-of-pocket upfront cost. The SSUP program is part of the Florida Storm Protection Plan, and is funded by a separate bill already included in our customers' bills. So all of us are paying for this program. So lines and equipment are moved to the front of the home for accessibility and minimal destruction to customers. So on the left, you see the overhead lines that you have in the alley with the transformer and the cable, that's called the secondary cable, that goes from the transformer to the weatherhead. After SSUP comes in, they put the transformer on the property, the junction box that you're going to sign, and we remove the overhead transformer and all of our equipment. We use directional boring to minimize any disruption to properties. So this is a machine, if you look at it to the right, it opens a pit, and then it shoots down to like whatever feet we tell them, and then it comes up. So we try to do this and not trenching, so we have minimal disruption. These are the two forms that you might have to sign one or two. The one on the right is the easement form. So FPL cannot install a transformer with use without signing this form. So you cannot just say, okay, they're installing a transformer in front of my property. No. You need to be aware that you're signing an easement form, and this is the legal document. The storm, the other one, the junction box, it's, most of the customers are going to sign this form. If you are overhead, if you're underground, we're just going to intercept your underground cable, but that form is just to let you know that we're undergrounding your cable, and you're okay with it. So this is what a customer outreach specialist looks like. They need to have their hat, their vest, their hat, usually they have their iPad, and then they have their FPL ID, so you could ask them for all these things to make sure it's not fraud, and it's an actual FPL employee contractor. Okay, so we pledged to restore each property to its pre-existing condition. The one on the left, you could see before we installed the transformer on the property, and the one on the right is after we installed the sod and everything around it. So this is just an overview for the city of Miami Springs. Out of 265 easements for this feeder line, for the city of Miami Springs, we only have nine easements left to complete our project. And out of 1,018 required JB the forms to go underground, we only have 249. So the FPL standard, this program started as a pilot back in 2018. So after, it became an actual program. It was just not a pilot. I know we started in Miami Springs, I think in 2019, and it was, we were just trying out the program to see if it worked. So we would just do individual laterals, small sections, to see if the program was working. And then after the program became an actual program and not a pilot anymore, we, the transformers only go in front of the property. This allows for faster restoration and ensures that the crews have better accessibility during maintenance and emergencies such as hurricanes or storms. So in the city of Miami Springs, there's some considerations, because I know, we all know that you have the 16-foot alleys. It needs to be, we could do case-by-case scenarios in some laterals that we might have a hard time putting transformers in the front. We need to make sure that the alley could be, you know, it's clear, it has a clear path. We're still going to need a 10-by-10-foot easement in private property in the rear. If you have a fence, the fence could be notched out, so we could have full access to the transformer in case of an outage. And then during construction, we might have some conflicts during city garbage that they pass twice a week. As you could see, our board machines are very big, we have to pull cable, we have to, so during construction, this is something that we might have to work with the city if we have a lateral that we're going to go in the rear for the alley. So this will just be a partnership that we will have to work with the city of Miami Springs. This is our website for the Storm Secure Program, it's fpl.com/HSUP. And this is our email, just in case you have a question and you can't remember right now, but you could email us there, and we could answer all of your questions. Thank you.
Can we ask questions? No, I'm sorry, but we can't.
They said they were going to take questions.
This is, this is where.
They want to take questions.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so Sulema, thank you for the presentation. Who is going to, to the best of your ability, address the concerns as you heard them from the residents?
So we, we have our team, our entire team here, so it'll be between all of us that will address the questions. What I want to start off.
But I'm not talking about questions. We just, we just had 30 minutes of concerns being voiced by residents.
Correct.
How, how.
Okay, so.
I'm trying to follow along, and I know that there were some things there that spoke to the concerns, but you guys were here, so you were.
So I will try, I didn't jot down every question, they were going relatively fast. So I can tell you a little bit more of what our, what our situation is, and then we can chime in as necessary. I mean, you guys all heard it as well, so you're more than welcome to, if we miss anything, to ask us.
Okay, please.
But basically, what I want to start off by saying is, this program is 100% voluntary. So this is not, I heard a couple of folks say, oh, you know, FPL is not going to come in here and do this and do that. We, this is a partnership. This is a partnership between FPL and the city of Miami Springs and its residents. So it's 100% voluntary. The reason why we're doing this program is because our metrics showed that all the lines that are underground perform a lot better when there's storms. So we started this program in 2019 in Miami Springs as a pilot. When we did the pilot, we did very small areas, and that is the reason why you see them now in the alleys. Someone else also asked, why weren't we not here six months ago? We were here in 2019. The record can show that we've been here and done multiple, multiple presentations back in the day, and that's the reason why we had the pilot done here in Miami Springs. You guys, Miami Springs, were one of the first cities that we did it on, and it was very successful, everybody was very happy. Your leadership at that time was, you know, very supportive of the program, and I don't have the exact percentage, but I think we did overall maybe 50% of Miami Springs at that time. So again, it's, we've been here, we've been, we did that project, and now we're coming back because now in the, in the program that says, because our program works by worst-performing laterals to the best-performing laterals. So the worst ones, we did them as a pilot, we adopted the program, and now we're back. So we have been here, it's just that we probably have not worked for a couple of years. Another question that came up, we're not asking for 200 and something square feet, it's 100. It's a 10-by-10 platform, concrete platform that the transformer sits on. We, again, program is voluntary, it's better to go underground, you don't have to do it. What happens is, we have secured out of the, the project, the current project that we're discussing now, we have secured most of the easements, we have very few easements left. And if we do not get those easements that we need, we have to make a decision internally, FPL, if we're going to move forward with the project, and some of the homes may have to stay overhead. I mean, it's, 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 we think it's a great, great thing. We, again, we've seen the results over the years. Since we've been doing this project, we had several storms, we had, what were the ones last year? We had a couple of storms, bad ones, and we saw that the outage numbers reduced significantly. So. What am I missing? Landscaping, we can hedge. When we do the work, we always restore to how it is, or even better, that's our policy. And if you're not happy, you call us. We, we've had this project, we've done undergrounding every city in Miami-Dade County. I know the transformers are not pleasing, they're not very aesthetically nice, but unfortunately, that's the only way that we can do the work, right? We need transformers, we're removing them from the poles, and we're putting them in the, in the front of the home. The reason why we do that is because when we are restoring, it's easier to drive our truck through there and identify with the yellow lettering, the box that has the problem, and then we can easily fix it. So that's the reason why we're moving it to the front of. What happened is that in the back of, in your case, you guys have alleys, but in most cities, there's no alleys. So when we come up for restoration, we have to go to a customer's backyard, we have to, they have fences, they have dogs, and sometimes an outage that could be controlled in two hours takes eight hours to fix. So that's why our standard operating procedure was to move those boxes under this program and put them in the front of, so we can roll our trucks and do the work as quickly and as invasive, less invasive as possible, and just move on. So I think, you know, we've. So I think, you know, we've had very, very happy customers in other areas. We've done this in Corr Gables, we've done them in, in everywhere. We're pretty much everywhere because we don't do a city all continuous. We do whatever laterals are worst performing. Again, it's voluntary 100% and it's free to the city. Your peers in Golden Beach, your peers in Surfside, your peers in, in a lot of other areas, which I'm not remembering, Virginia... Some of them have paid for this overhead conversion in the millions, tens of millions of dollars because they want it for their residents, so they have paid for the conversion. And now we are offering the program. It's a 30-year program. It's going to take a while, that's why you see the pockets of work that we're doing, but eventually, everybody in the county, not everybody, but the homes that require transformer will have it. So you're not going to be the only city. Everybody that has the project done will require every three, four homes, depending, like Sulema said, on the size and the distance and voltage, will have a box in the, in the front of their home. So, but again, it's voluntary. If, if, if you don't want it, we move on to the next one, right? I don't...
Here, I'd like, I'd like to chime in. So thank you, Addis. So I've been the mayor since April, but I've been on the council since 2020. So I remember when this was being piloted. And yes, you guys were here back in 2019 when you came to, when it went from being a pilot to being a program. I was very much interested. I remember that a bunch of storms had hit us. I would have taken a transformer in my living room to try to get underground lines because every time the wind blows on my house, I would lose power. I was, so I was selfishly very interested in, and if you were to bring it up, it looks like you just excluded like my block. Like there's literally, it's blue all around my block. Yeah, so I was left out of that one to my chagrin. So I remember the last time you guys came out, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but it wasn't in 2020. That's when you were starting the project. And I was sitting right there and, and you guys basically summarized, you know, what you guys had done, that it was about 55% of the city. And I asked at that time, is there any plans to expand, right? Because like, hello, everybody around me got it and we didn't. And at that time, we were told no. So I, I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. I think the fact that you guys did that for 55% of the residents in Miami Springs was great. It was at no cost to the residents or the city. That is wonderful, you're to be commended. Where I feel like you guys shot yourselves in the foot is that when you say, now we're back, I heard about this two weeks ago, and I've been on this council since 2020, and I heard about it two weeks ago because residents have been getting Erby knocking on their doors for six months. And so sometimes the messaging gets twisted and then next thing you know, you got a room full of people. As a matter of fact, there was, there was going to be a room full of people when you weren't here and I said, but took it off the agenda because I wanted you guys to be here, because you guys shot yourselves in the foot. I didn't want to have to sit through, through all of those concerns. I wanted you guys to have to hear it so that you could address it. So, so that aside, that I feel like, I was, I didn't know the scope. As a matter of fact, I have the question. Is this part of a longer, a longer plan to eventually get the whole city? Will eventually I get underground?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's the first I hear of it. Now, I know that you guys, after last week, that you guys were going to be coming in and we pulled it off the agenda. The city manager called, you guys came in, you met, the vice mayor sat in on, on, on that meeting, but that's, you know, it's, it's good to know that at least you guys are trying. So I have a couple of questions and based on the concerns that I'm hearing, because I think that the people that were knocking on doors may, may have, you know, gotten ahead of their skis a little bit. When I hear you say that this is voluntary, that means, and, and I hear you, you said a couple of times that there's only nine easements left that you need in the front. So if the people on a particular street just say, look, none of us want it and you know what, we're not going to give it up in the front, it sounded like Sulema said that there are some chances that it may work in the back, but if worse comes to worse and a city block or a street does not want to do it, they do not have to give up space in their front yard, they do not have to give up their property, they don't have to take an easement. If FPNL decides that it cannot be done in the back, then they can just stay with overhead power lines? Is that, like you could have a whole street kind of opt out?
Yes.
So...
So Eduardo here is the engineer who designs the projects. So he'll speak on it, but basically he has to go back to the drawing board. I'll let you, why don't you address it?
Hi, good evening. My name is Eduardo Escudero with FPL. I'm the engineering lead for Dade County for the Storm Secure Underground Program. So to answer your question, if a block decides to...
Is it, but let's be clear, is it a block? Is it entire, like, like what is it that you need? How often do you, does somebody have to be the one that says, I'll take it in the chin, you could put it in mine, so that their neighbors can get it? Is it an entire street? Is it a block? How does it work?
So yeah, so it depends, depends on the size of the house, on the demand of that specific property. That goes, you know, we have to calculate the number and the size of the transformer, not the physical size, but the capacity of it. They're all pretty much the same size. Just to clarify, one thing that Addis said, the pad is not 10 by 10. The pad is probably about three and a half by four and a half, excuse me. And then the, the transformer itself is probably about three and a half by three and a half.
Does that have to go in front of every house or is that once every, depending on the sizes of the houses, it's...
Depending on, on the demand and then also the success rate that we have with, with folks taking an easement. It averages to about, maybe on a, on a standard single-family home, we're talking maybe 2,000 square feet, about every five houses or so. And, and that even depends on how it's laid out, because if it's five houses long, we might need two. If we're talking a cluster, we might need one. So the factors that, that go into that are the draw of the property and then the distance from the actual transformer to the meter of the individual property. So it's a cumulative effect for each location. So I, I would like to give you a standard answer, like, hey, every 300 feet, we need one, but that's probably the best I can give you.
Okay, so if, if you have yes, 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 no, yes, yes, what have, can you have just one segment, whether it's a block or two blocks or whatever the demand requires? Can you have a segment that just says, you know what, we'll pass, we're okay with it being in the back? Can you do that?
Yeah, so in short, yes. So we have had other scenarios where we've kind of had, you know, groups of residents that would prefer to not have that. So our, our program is part of the, the Storm Protection Plan, excuse me. So the undergrounding is the primary way that we would improve our, our customers' reliability. But that, that also includes ways of hardening. So I'm sure you guys are familiar with the feeder hardening program that they, you know, they're installing stronger poles and wires.
They did that in my house. They doubled down on the poles and put bigger, stronger poles and I thought, well, I'll never get it underground. That's why I was interested when I heard that this project had started up and I hadn't heard anything about it.
Well, I would, I would actually say that you might have more of a benefit because that reliability is actually a little bit, a notch above our program coming off.
It doesn't stop the squirrels from getting zapped and knocking us out.
So one, one alternative design method is to install smaller, stronger poles and stronger wires to, so we would harden the lateral and those customers will still be fed underground from those laterals, but they wouldn't have a complete underground lateral. So they would still have an improvement to their reliability, but they would not be a part of an underground lateral. And that is if we, if we can design it. There, there are occasions where we, you know, some of the houses were like overbuilt and we can't even get back there, only to remove poles.
All right, I got, I have an important question. You guys had a slide and there was a lot on the slide, so I don't fault Sulema for getting through it, right? But she said that at one point during the, after the pilot, when it was a project, that you guys were doing it in the alleys and that, if I understood Sulema correctly, by policy, that was changed, that now you're not doing that. But I've heard a little bit like, so it's not a, you know, I heard like there was a chance that you could still, there's some wiggle room there. So when was that changed by policy that you guys decided? Because like, if FPNL is saying like, listen, we're just not going to do it anymore, right? Then, then since this is a voluntary program, that's important to know, but it sounds like maybe that isn't always the case. So what, what is the policy and when did that policy change? Because I think that that's kind of, that, that's, that's an important thing because you guys were doing it in the back before and now you're not. So what, what is the answer to that?
So there's, there is a difference in, you know, the growth of the program in and of itself. As was mentioned before, we started as a pilot. You know, you guys, the, the city was selected because of the reliability challenges that you had. So through that pilot program, you know, we are trying to do the best we can. This, this was a new thing in the industry. We're one of the, one of the first groups that's going through this extensive effort. We're the first, we're the, we're the bigger players in the state that are investing so many resources in doing that. So we are just coming up with the best solutions that we have at the time. What we've seen throughout the progress of the program is that it's to standardize items, right? What does that do? You know, even, you know, behind-the-scenes stuff, it standardizes contracts. It, it helps us procure the right type of materials. It does a lot of things to standardize and that helps benefit with overall customer experience with, with having crews that know what they're doing and moving forward. So I can't say that there was a conscious effort to exclude cities that have alleyways just because I think the city is kind of unique in, in having that resource. So now that we have that standardized, you know, now we're kind of like firing on all cylinders, making, making selections, we're able to do more work, you know, utilizing the funds more responsibly and being able to, to extend, you know, just extend ourselves more with the, with the same amount of resources that we have.
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry, already sorry, no, not, not doing this. This is now our opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, one, one more item that Addis was, was advising is that initially, we were doing individual laterals. So that would be 10 homes at a time or maybe like half a block at a time. So what we're doing now, if you can imagine, I don't know if you guys are familiar with what substations are, they look like little mini power plants. And then from there, you have the main lines and then the main lines have several branches that come off of them. Those are the laterals. So we are selecting a feeder at a time. So we're talking about hundreds or possibly thousands of customers at one shot. So in that, our other gain efficiencies in cost, reducing the cost, allowing us to do more customers overall with the same amount of budget.
Okay, I have two other questions, but I'm going to kick it over to the vice mayor.
Thank you. Well, I think the biggest thing that at least I heard from the residents and I've heard from other residents is that a lot of this decision-making that was done, you said there only nine out of 265, was under, in my opinion, at least the residents have complained to me or have expressed themselves, basically under false pretenses. It's the difference between you guys giving a good explanation of what and why and what the decision is to get these transformers in the front of your yard versus you have no option, we're going to stick this pole in front of your yard. I mean, you start to get to that point of, do I have a choice or not? Do I rather have a pole or do I rather have the transformer? And a lot of people here, and I've heard it from a lot of them, is that that's been one of the tactics. If that's been one of the tactics, those numbers are skewed. There's obviously not that many people that have agreed to do this if you guys have gone in there with false pretenses. And that's the biggest problem that I have. I just think, first of all, obviously, at the beginning, we didn't have much communication from you guys coming into this town. And then let alone, when you get to the residents, you don't really give them enough of an explanation because it's obviously, you leave dumbfounded, why has it all been done before? And even now today, we're still not, aside from cost and is it easier? You guys haven't had much of a problem in taking care and maintaining all those other properties that you already did put them in the alley. And then you just mentioned now again, the case-by-case basis. So it seems like there was options that we could have tackled from the beginning before you got 250 residents to agree. And now here we are, you know, trying to see how we can backpedal and see how we can get some of them to have an option. But then it's not fair to those that, you know, agreed, in my opinion, on false pretenses. I mean, a concrete block in, I mean, a concrete pole, I have one, unfortunately, I'm in front of a school and I got one of yours, large, heavy ones in the public swale, which is another thing that's hard to understand when there is your stuff, your equipment is on public swales as well. As we mentioned before in our meeting, that we thought, well, why don't we put the transformers in the entrances to these alleys on this public swale? So I just think we need to like give a little much better explanation, the whys, why not and why we're doing this. But definitely, I think there's a lot of people, these numbers are skewed. At least the people that I've heard, they keep saying that they've been told or the, or the next thing is, well, you're going to have to pay for it. Like, come on, what kind of a, what kind of a partnership is that? What kind of a good, you know, neighbor or a partner that you're going to threaten with, well, no, you're going to have to pay for it next time? No options were given. And obviously there is because you just backpedaled into saying that there's possibility case-by-case.
Yeah, and, and, and the possibility is not necessarily, you know, at, at that stage, it's, it's the, the decision that we have, as Addis was saying, a business decision to make. One, if the, the equipment can handle it, because our equipment is finite. We, we don't have, you know, we do have larger equipment, but they're, you know, they're, they're more for commercial type property, so we're limited by that. If we need more transformers, then that's more people needing to sign, sign over. We don't know what, what the underground utility situation is in, in the, in the alleyways, you know, accessing it, right? When, when storms come, we, we don't, and in our, in our meeting, you know, the Public Works Director was, you know, justifiably proud of the, the level of maintenance that they provide to the alleyways, but things just kind of go awry. So if you have a massive tree there, that's, that has to, that's going to extend, you know, a restoration. Whereas in the front, you can have a tree as well, but you can maneuver around those things, right? You know, even regular day-to-day maintenance, if, where if we scrape a, a, a branch, that, that affects the, the insulation of the vehicle and the vehicle is now out of commission. So there, there are a lot of things to, to aid in restoration. That is probably the main benefit in putting these in the front of. As Addis was alluding to, our truck can, can pull up, have all the space that they need to do things because, as we know, when power goes out, it goes out in the most inconvenient times. So time is of the essence, you know, we have, you know, residents that have medical needs or, or, you know, people that are, that are fortunate to be on generators, but that time, that, that time is finite also. So it, I, I wouldn't say that the, the alleyway or, or limiting our attempt or putting that, you know, on the back burner, it's not just for, for our benefit, but it's for the benefit of the resident to have a better overall customer experience. Unfortunately, we live in, in South Florida where weather is an issue, so we, it, it's just better for restoration and for overall safety of the...
I, I would say that it's, if, when you can, when you can bury the lines, it's a win for FPNL, for sure. I think it's a win for residents to have the, the power lines buried, okay? If we're being charitable and you had a third party that was doing your messaging, the, they, they are, they messed up the messaging. So let me ask you, because I have another couple of questions, but if we had a resident that said, hey, I'd be willing to give, make like a little niche for my block in the back, I mean, obviously, that, I, I think it's pretty obvious that you, if you would rather not have that in the front yard, right? Because that's the forward-facing part of your home. If, is that an option? Because I don't think that that option was given to, I, I heard residents say they felt pressured, that the person that they were talking to, and you know, maybe FPNL isn't responsible for, you know, the, the person who was getting paid, you know, not a lot of money to go knock on doors in a yellow vest, right? But that messaging, coupled with the fact that there wasn't good messaging with the city, is what's caused this uproar that now, if I am getting the right sentiment, you had people that said yes, that now are looking around like, wait a minute, why am I going to, you know, I felt like I got pressured into this and I didn't have to, so now they're going to back up. And it's kind of like what the vice mayor is saying. Is it a viable option if you're looking at a segment, right? And like, hey, these houses, you guys are going to be one segment? Can people choose to be like, all right, look, I'll do it in the back and that way you guys can do it through the alley? Is that, is that a viable option that you can make? Because that was not, that was not given as an option to the residents that had their doors knocked on.
So I would just start by saying that, you know, we, I'm, I'm going to, we'll take your notes back on the messaging, you know, Erby is our vendor, so, you know, when you say Erby, you know, we're, we're taking that, that responsibility for that because they're our vendor and, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that the, the messaging that they give is, you know, more respectful if, if that's, if that's the sentiment.
Okay, but start here, because this is where the message should have started. Is it an option to give up some space in the back? If one of the residents of a segment decides, hey, you know what, I'll give a little corner so that our block... If one of the residents of a segment decides, hey, you know what, I'll give a little corner so that our block can have it underground, can you guys do that?
Yeah, so we haven't had success with clustering transformers. Just because as I mentioned, the further you get away from a transformer, the, the electric, the electric, the electrical potency of that degrades over time, over distance. So the, the cluster really doesn't work, right? The, the one transformer for the cluster of five or so properties is optimal.
All right, well, you lost me on the, on the technical aspects of it. Let me see if I can ask it a different way, okay? What are the, the option is, you have a, a segment that's going to get potentially their power lines underground. The options are, somebody decides to give up some property in the front or what? What are the other options?
It would have to be on a case-by-case scenario. So how, I'll, I'll follow your hypothetical on a progression, right? So if we don't get enough adoption of the easements, which as was mentioned before, is, is voluntary, right? We've had plenty of people tell us no and we try to seek alternative locations. If we cannot, if we don't get enough and we stretch our equipment as far as possible, then we start looking at, at other options, right? Some of the options could be to what we say hardened overhead. One of the options could be, hey, you know, this might not be the right, the right fit at the time for, for this customer. For this group of, of properties, which has happened in the past and, you know, they, the, I, I don't wanna say this is get to the back of the line, but we try to harden everybody. So that might be an overhead hardened solution. And probably, and again, I'm not, I wasn't there present, but probably the, the individual that was alluding to the poles is that once that's hardened overhead, then we have satisfied the goals of the program for that group of people. We will not come back and underground the lateral. Like, that, that, that meets the, the state requirement, that meets our goals for reliability, so the lateral is hardened. So that, that could be the natural progression of a project.
That, that lack of specificity, I feel, is what's, what's, because it's basically, hey, do you wanna give up space in your front yard? If not, we'll have to think of something, right? So that's, so what are the options? That sounds like one option, right? And then insert whatever misinformation about, we'll put a pole like, you know, in, in the front of your house.
If you put a hardened pole in the back, you're gonna have to drive into alley.
Louis, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, buddy. I know, I know, I know, I know Louis, but I'm gonna have to ask you to.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So I guess the answer, to answer your question is, first of all, if they don't give us the easement there, then we have to look at what are, what can we do, right? With that, with that block or those five, six homes, right? The alternative would be to either get creative and see what we can do. And if we cannot get creative, we, we can't, you know, pull off another transformer based on load and, and, and all of that.
The thing is that like, your sales pitch is what's wrong, right? Because you're not giving an option, like, you trying to figure out, like, if part of the sales pitch was, hey, would you be willing to give up something in the front? No, how about in the back? If that was an option, you could play that card if you feel like you need to. But if you're not telling them that, then how are you gonna figure it out if you haven't assessed whether or not they're willing to do it?
Right, but the back of the, the alley is not an option. It's not an option.
So, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
One second, so it's not an option.
I'll get to that, I'm asking, I'm thinking this. I promise, guys, we're thinking the same thing, just, but if it, if it turns into a shouting match, then we can't have this conversation, so please.
If it was up to me, Addis, I would put them in the alleyway. Let me just say that, right? But it's not up to me, right? So when we started the pilot, like Eduardo said, we started with small portions of homes. Eight homes, half a block, four homes, we put them in the, in the back, right, in the alley. As we started moving forward and doing larger amount of customers at one given point, we, management decided that the best way to proceed is to put them in the front. So it's not a decision that we make at our level, it's a decision that's made from corporate. So the options are, you don't give us the easement in the front, we're gonna try to work with the customer next, the, the customer next to him, the other one. We get a block that they are not willing to participate, we're gonna look at a way to harden them. Why? Because we wanna make sure that everybody's hardened under this program. That may consist of a couple of things. Half the neighbors that we can pull off a different transformer may get underground, maybe four homes continue to stay overhead. So what does that require? Different poles, different kinds of wires in the alley, right? Or in the front of, for wherever it's gonna be designed. So you may have a portion, and, and it's very realistic, I want you to say, I, I'm not gonna say in the record, which homes. But I have dealt with those issues where we have had in a community, six homes overhead. Because they didn't want to give the, the easement. So that's, that's just the, the process, right? And that's just what the management has decided to do is, you know, front of or hardening in the back. And when we say, when Erby has gone around saying, you know, you're gonna have to pay for it. Granted, it's not the best choice of words because obviously they're not explaining it. But what we're saying is that once we harden everyone, we cannot come back and then put you underground. Because we already spent money hardening your equipment, right, to serve your home. So that's why we say if you wanna go later on underground, it'll be at the cost of the resident. Or the city, however, it's decided at that time. So that's, that's what the option is.
Erby wasn't as nuanced as you were there, Addis. We need to get you a, a yellow. Okay, so before, hold on, before I let you chime in, I have two more questions.
Sure.
Okay, can you please address safety concerns, Mr. Engineer? And also the look, to, to what extent can you use some type of shrubbery or trellis system or something to try to detract or, or dress up in some way? What, what, what can a resident do? That's important stuff for residents to know before you knock on their door.
Perfect, so I'll let him address the safety part of it. But the hedging, we can install at whatever, we can provide you a list of different hedges and, and whatever you want to do around it. We can do it on the sides and we can do it in the back. That's part of what we do as customer, to please the customer, to help in the aesthetics. The reason why we can't put it in the front is because the whole point of having the transformer in the front is that when the truck rolls up in the middle of the night, when you have an outage, those yellow lights, those yellow numbers light up and we can see which box is the one that has the problem.
I got you, but you see, that's an important point because we had somebody speak last meeting when you weren't here and they said that there were certain setbacks and you had to stay a certain distance. So I want to, I want to hear, I want to hear from you guys. How can shrubbery or a trellis system to, it's, you said the pad is how much? It's a 10 by 10 area? You have to be outside of the 10 by 10, but the pad is smaller?
No, so the 10 by 10 area is really for constructability. We don't know what we're gonna encounter under the ground.
Got you, you might need to move a little bit over within that.
Our, our ideal location is right at the property line. But we do need three foot clearance on the sides and in the back, and then a minimum of eight in the front for operational purposes.
Got you, so, so the pad is how large?
Like four and a half by five, four by five.
So four by five?
Yes.
And within three feet, but you can't get any closer than three feet of it with a trellis or shrub?
Right, just, that's, that's for operational purposes, for the safety of installation.
Three, three feet all around it? But then you can put shrubs as long as it's in the sides and the back?
Correct.
It just has to be open in the front for, okay, that's important, I think it's, that's important.
We're, we're willing to put the shrubbery that they like.
Okay, all right, nicer sales pitch, that, that works, okay. The safety concerns over, you know, if it's, if somebody's playing soccer, is somebody gonna, you know, electrocute themselves? Okay, do you wanna dispel any of those things that came up?
Well, I, I, I can say that FPL as a company, we wouldn't be installing, we wouldn't put ourselves at that amount of liability. We've installed thousands of these transformers over the course of this program in Dade County alone. And we have had zero incidents known, known to date. In some areas where we do have some of the travel, we'll, we'll have to put bollards, like when there's more industrial areas to avoid some of those types of scenarios. But we have yet to hear of, of any safety concern that, that is actualized and, you know.
If a small child was fiddling with the handle, trying to get into the box, there's.
Those, those boxes have a, have a sturdy lock, unlock mechanism and other safety measures to.
And what about if a car were to crazily just run into it? So compare that to a, a car running into a, a power pole.
I, I would say it's, well, it's less risky than a power pole. Power poles are closer to the street, so less risk than hitting a tree or a street sign that's already out there, you know.
Okay, and what about, like, so what would happen if a car were, you know, somebody driving out of a driveway?
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I, we, we can't really speak to all the hypotheticals because likewise of a pole, if a car backs into a pole and the pole falls, you know, I mean, we can't, we can't, you can't design for all, all kinds of scenarios. But the, the equipment is, is safe, like I mentioned. Aside from just, just in Dade County, we have thousands in all the other counties as well that we, that we operate out of.
Okay, all right, Vice Mayor?
Well, I just kinda wanted you to explain a little bit more clearer about this whole hardening. You know, if you decide not to, to take on this program and you're gonna get the hardening scenario. What exactly does that mean? Because this is where the misinformation has been there, where this hardening is in front of the person's house. You're saying that it's not, I just heard the back alley, can you please explain?
Yes, so I would say a hardened, undergrounding the lines fits under that hardened umbrella. Poles and wires may also fit in that hardened umbrella. So it gets assessed at an extreme, it's what's called extreme wind load criteria. So depending on the poles that, that you guys have already, those might, might be just under that criteria. So what hardening would be is we would, you know, use our, our structural analysis software to make sure that the poles that are either installed are, are meet that high wind load criteria. If not, they get replaced. So it may also mean that, you know, the, the span distance might have to differ. You know, I don't know when, when the, the poles were installed in the rear of, in the alleyway. So they may have been designed to another standard. So we're, we would be bringing everything up to the extreme wind load criteria. And that would, that's the burden to, to have it assessed as hardened. So in the case of, of the alleyways, the poles will likely stay there, right? Because some poles are still good, you know, if we were to harden, right? That, that's, that's, that's your, that's your, that's your ask. Transformers would still be on the poles and we would go to, we would, we would attempt to go to the meter of the individual properties. I say attempt because sometimes there's swimming pools that you can't get around or, you know, if, there's different scenarios. But almost, almost everybody would, would be undergrounded from the rear of, of an overhead line that is hardened. Which means your reliability is significantly higher typically.
Okay, so I'm almost afraid to say, so hardening, if you don't give up in the front, then you guys consider how you can, if it's not that, then it's hardening in the back. The hardening in the back can be hardening of the poles and wires, but it can be hardening in the back by burying it underground in the back.
Yeah, at, at that point, we're not maintaining, you know, transformers and, and, and equipment. And doing those, having large bore equipment either.
I still feel like it would be helpful if people had a way of telling you that they'd be willing to give up some space in the back because that could help. But do we have any other comments from anybody on the council? Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Question to that, so obviously your, the hardening would mean another pole and obviously there's work to be done, there's something, a situation happens, you're gonna go back there and take care of the, of the pole. Like to me, what's the difference, how much more work, how much more manpower do you need to go to the transformer versus going to the hardening pole? If you're still saying that it's gonna be some wiring, transformer.
You're, you're speaking of the, the construct, the installation and the, can, one of you guys wanna come up and? I'll have the construction guys.
Good evening, my name is Javier Prado and I oversee the construction. To do the override construction in the back, it is much more cumbersome. The equipment we needed, we're gonna install, you know, poles, excavate, and the trees are at major issues. So one of the major issues we've had with our, our, our power lines is the vegetation landing on the power line. So if we harden the rear of Miami Springs, it's very dense, it's very beautiful. But those trees are gonna continue to grow and we're gonna continue to experience the same issues we're seeing, vegetation. So that's not gonna get eliminated and it is customer responsibility to trim the trees. When we go out there, we trim the trees when it is unsafe and we do that V-shaped cut, it's only about one foot clearance from the trees. But from a constructibility perspective, it is much more challenging to work in the back with our equipment. It might fit, it might not, the garbage trucks have been in, you know, conflict with our schedules. Does that answer your question?
No, basically, not, not really, only because to me you're still, okay, so instead of that pole, why don't you just put the transformer and go take care of the transformer back there?
Well, that's gonna be a case-by-case basis as we mentioned. We're not guaranteeing anything, but if we don't have success in adoption of the front of, we'll look at it at a case-by-case basis, but no promises.
I've got, I'm sorry, no, no, before I ask my question, I, I wanna give you your shot because you, you tried to jump in, so go ahead, Councilman.
So, Sam, how you doing? Thank you guys for coming out here and addressing this issue. So I've been contacted by a lot of the residents and a big part of their concern and their complaint is the messaging. They've all in same line have complained about how it's been deceitful and how a lot of people have even felt threatened to a degree with either one option or the other. So since the messaging, I feel, has gotten diluted or, you know, misunderstand, misunderstood, is there maybe a way, and I also feel like a lot of the residents want dialogue, they want some back and forth. And obviously because of the rules here, you know, that's hard. And I think it's a great, you know, program. I personally, I bought my home here in Miami Springs a little bit over two years ago. And speaking to that point, a big reason, a big sell for me when I bought my home here was that I have all my utilities in, in the back of my, in my alley. But one of the biggest problems I've had is I've lost electricity a handful of times back there. You know, for one thing or another, we lose electricity and it's been very difficult. For me personally, the front of my lot, I have a lot of space, I could give up some, some space. But the guy across the street from me, and actually most of the houses across the street from me, they don't have that space. And I could see how it will be an issue for them to wanna give up even 250 feet or 100 feet of, of their lot, you know? So would it be okay maybe to come back and have some dialogue with some of the residents that have, you know?
Yes, of course, they could contact us and on behalf of FPL, we apologize for any inconveniences these vendors may have caused. That's not our approach, this feedback will be shared with them and we'll ensure that they hear us and then follow what we expect them to do. We do have dedicated in-house team members. It's gonna be a much smaller team, it's not the team that's out there talking to all of you, but we can, we can help with our internal team as well.
I think it'll, it'll be important to have the dialogue in public in a group with everyone. So other, you know, other concerns could be addressed at the same time and people could, you know, address any frustrations that they might have had, so.
We've done that before. If there's a particular block that wants to meet with us, we could find the time and arrange that.
Maybe we should take advantage now that, you know, you guys said you came out in 2019 and you started, you know, communicating that you wanted to do this project. Personally, I didn't hear about this until recently. I moved here, like I said, two years ago, no idea that this was happening, you know? So maybe we could put this out on a community effort so everybody could come out and, and ask questions.
Sure.
Thank you, I've got, I've got a, right, yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on. I know, we're doing it in public right now, I have a, I have an important question. So when possible, do you guys try to do a more thoughtful decision about where they? So if you have a corner lot where the front is facing this way, but on the side, like, do you use, you know, the swale area? On the, do you try to be thoughtful and kind of Occam's razor? Because it, it, at least the way it hit was that you were just knocking on people's doors individually. It was kind of like divide and conquer. Hey, you gotta have it in the front, hey, you gotta have it in the front, hey, you gotta have it in the front. It was kind of like casting a wide net to see who you would get to say yes. Like, do you guys try to find the less intrusive implementation maybe on the side of a lot? Is that, or do you, do you even give that as an option? Because it doesn't sound like that's what was said to residents.
If there's a corner lot, they would have a side that's still facing public right of way.
Right.
That's a more unusual condition. However, as long as we can notch out the fence in the backyard and that backyard is still facing the right of way, that we would consider that accessible because our truck is still in the street and it was accessible towards that co, corner, which we will notch out the fence and have full access to a transformer without having to knock on your door.
But you don't have to necessarily notch out a fence. Some people don't have their, some, some people have a setback on the side yard where conceivably you could fit the transformer and it's not in the front of their house, it's on the side if they have a corner house. Is that, is that an option?
What I meant, what I said was meant because we would put it in private property. So if they don't have a fence, obviously we don't need to. So if they don't have a fence, obviously, we don't need to notch it out, but we don't put it in right of way.
So it can't, so it can't be in the swale, it has to be on private property?
Yes.
Okay. But can it be, Art, Artie, I'm sorry, that, Artie, the thing is that they can't hear you, I'm hearing you, but the people, this has to be for the record in a public meeting, so it has to be up there. That's why we give you guys the opportunity to talk into the mic, now it's our opportunity to talk to into mics. I know, I know how you feel, trust me. I'm trying to convey your sentiments. Again, I, I, I think that the, these are opportunities that are being missed, where residents may be willing to give up private property on the side, if they have a corner house or in the back, but you guys aren't even asking, you're just asking about the front, and then that's what's caused all of of this, or at least contributed. Let me, let me kick it over to, okay, go ahead quickly.
So there's 265 people, residents, I think you mentioned only nine, have not been, have not agreed to the easement. As we talked about it, there's a lot of misinformation, a lot of cases, some believe, and I believe in false pretenses. What is that person who right here today is sitting in this, in this audience, and wants to do something about their mistake of signing up paperwork, because they felt that they did not get the proper information? What are those people going to do? And what is the course of action they need to do?
They should call, contact us and talk to us about it. They could better explain our program, what's going on in their house, or what we're proposing in their house. And I would say there's still an opportunity for them to back out.
Okay.
You would say there's an opportunity, or there is an opportunity?
An opportunity.
Okay. Because I, I feel like some residents felt like they got kind of pressured into it, their words, not mine. So if somebody wants to...
A man opportunity, like, they can back out of it.
They can.
A joint effort, we don't want to force this on anybody.
Got you.
This is a joint effort between FPL and our customers. If you don't want it, that's okay.
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 That's important.
Yeah, but we need to know. We don't want to reach construction.
No, absolutely, that's with this, again, I wish we could have done this earlier, we could have, we could have gotten here.
Now is the time to do this.
Yeah.
We don't want to reach construction, and then all of a sudden, no, I don't want it.
No, I, I got you.
Okay.
I got you. Let me, let me, I'll get you now, Councilman, but let me get.
So I heard tonight that management, corporate, right, this is a decision, it's not the first time that I've heard that corporate has a disconnect with what's going on with engineers and with the community. That said, a company that earned 4.5 billion in net profits last year, I would think they have another creative way to go about this, especially after the comments you heard today. I'm sorry for those citizens that were misled. You have every right to speak up and demand that whatever agreement you sign be retracted. I firmly believe that the alleyways, if you have them, it's your solution. I mean, that's why they're there. We, as a city, clean those alleyways, we maintain those alleyways. My house in particular is, I had the underground put around, not my house, you guys missed my house, but behind my house, AT&amp;T put in a fiber optic box many years ago, a couple years ago. And those were two huge boxes that were put behind my house on the swale. Last year, I had to go to fiber optic, because I had an old copper wiring that the phone line kept dropping. And they told me, you have to switch to fiber, and it'll be cheaper for you. And in the end, I did. So I got better service from AT&amp;T, and it came out cheaper. So just think about that, when you approach these residents. You need to, to Mayor's point, what's your selling point? Look, you're going to get better service, it's going to, and and you, maybe it'll come out less expensive for you, you got to give them something. I do agree that the front yard is an absolute disaster if we go with that, especially in this community. No, it's okay. I mean, we, it's true, our yards are not big. We have small, I have a small front yard, and I'm thinking, where is that box going to go? So again, I, I really believe your solution is the alleyway, case by case basis. You can clean those trees out, and if you're going down the street looking for a box with the yellow numbers, it's, you said it was easier for the truck to work in the front yard. I would really counter that and say, it's easier to work on the alleyway, it's a straight shot. You're not in anyone's way, you're not in in the middle of the street, you don't have, you're not blocking up traffic, there's no one walking back there, you're not supposed to be walking the alleyway unless you're police, law enforcement, or utility. So please approach the residents with sensitivity, with respect, or have your contractors, right, something said, something mis-said, whatever, but it's your contractors, they answer to you. So make sure the messaging is clear and is consistent. And again, I really believe your, the alleyways is your ticket. Thank you for burying the the lines on the ground, you did it on Curtis Parkway, you put the large post, great, awesome. But you have to go a step further, especially in this community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Lamas.
I believe our blocks...
Your mic is off.
I believe our residential blocks have about, what, eight houses per street?
Roughly?
Yeah. Why is it that we can't, why can't you go on the swale again, why couldn't we bundle them up, bundle them up at the end of each alley and then bury down? I mean, the voltage drop can't be that big, just four hours.
Our policy is to put it, find a permanent location for the transformer. When we put it in right of way, we're subject to the discretion of the city, anything they may want to do in the future with regards to their right of way. So if our stuff is in the way, then now we got to move it, because we're there because of the city's permission. So now, if you're going to install sidewalks, drainage, any sort of roadway improvement program, we are in your way, and we got to relocate it, and we may not have a spot to put it. So that's why we did not put our transformers in right of way.
But if the city were, were okay with it, are you guys okay with it?
You, you might be okay with it, but future administration may do something in the right of way, and then all of a sudden, my, my, my conflict, our transformer might be in the way. And 20 years from now, you can install some sort of drainage, or put sidewalks, widen the roadway, who knows? And that's going to be in the way. Now we got to find a spot to put it.
So I'd like to, from a friend here, I'd like to call up our Public Works Director, if you don't mind, Juan, I'm going to put you on the spot. You've got a lot of experience, right? Mas sabe el diablo por viejo que por diablo. Give us, not as our Public Works Director, but what you've heard, based on your experience, what is your assessment of what, where we are at? Do you feel like there's a common ground, based on all the things that you've experienced? How are you taking this in to help us to understand, based on your lens of experience?
Mayor, Commissioners, Councilmembers, I'm sorry. I'm a person of the public right of way. I don't see why FPL has any business going into private property. We have right of ways, we have right of ways that are never going to be widened, because there's nowhere to go, no additional traffic to put through the city, nobody wants traffic through the city. Drainage, we've done drainage over the years in many other cities that I've been in, and we work with what's out there. If the catch basin has to be moved, it has to be moved. Never have we required a transformer to be moved to put in drainage. So there's plenty of right of way in this city, there's plenty of space in alleys, there's no reason to put them on private property. That's me. I believe public right of way is public right of way for that purpose.
All right.
Not for FPL's purpose to go on private property.
Okay, don't, don't, don't leave. So can the city manager or city attorney chime in? Like, what is keeping us from coming to some kind of agreement where they could use public rights away that can't, at the whim of a council down the line, turn into some issue? Like, how can, can this get done?
It's up to FPL, their policy is they don't do private, public right of way.
Well, I mean, no, that's not the sense I got. I said, if we can do it, are you willing to do it? And they said that, like...
Right of way is not an option.
So why, right of way is not an option for you guys?
I monitor transformers, right of way is not an option.
All right. It's not an option, just absolutely, like, not even as a, on a case by case?
No.
All right. Let me see if I can just kind of summarize, doesn't mean that we're wrapping this up, right? So now that we've had lots of discussion and we're clear, you guys would like to bury some lines. It has to come out of private property. It, you want it to be in the front, it, and you're not giving residents an opportunity to, to give their input, to have, to give up private property in the back, at least not a systematic way for them to tell you, hey, I'm willing to give up, you could take a notch out of, out of my yard. So it's either in the front, or you harden in the back, and that hardening can either be like stronger poles and more robust lines, or you may decide that it's worth your while to bury it under, underneath. So if residents at the individual level say, hey, man, I'm not putting in the front, for the record, you could put one in my front yard, man, okay? I'm serious. Like, you could put one in my front yard. But if individual residents don't want to do it, but they would like the benefit of having their power lines buried, they, I'm, I'm assuming they should organize, right? They should talk to each other and, right? Because the problem is, if you're just knocking on individual doors, like, I just feel like this is such an inefficient way to try to get something done that's going to be a win for you and a win for residents. Because if those are the options, it's either in the front, or we figure out how to harden in the back, right? You're not going to just leave it alone. You're either going to put it in the front, or harden in the back for whatever segment of residence, of houses there are. Then I guess what you're saying is that our residents now can, can listen to all of this and understand what you're, the, the unfortunate fear mongering that happened with some of the, the Irby people about that, like, if you don't do it, you're going to have to pay, or if you don't do it, you're going to have a metal pole in your front yard, all of that is hogwash. Also, something that we may have heard about that, like, you have to have a 10-foot setback, you can't hide it on three sides with a trellis or shrubbery, as long as you're three feet away from a pad that's four by five, you can kind of hide it a little bit, okay? So it, it seems to me, I wish I had these problems, guys, I wish I could be talking to all the people on LaVilla and talking to my neighbors about, hey, I'll take it for the team, but I, I don't have that option, I got to wait, right? Because I'm dying to have it buried underground. But all these people, right, that you, you don't have to just keep going and knocking on the doors again and again and again. I, I, I think the, what, the message that has to be conveyed to you guys is, talk to your neighbors. And if somebody's willing to do it, fine, I mean, you could try to tell them, hell, I'll give up my backyard, I don't know how that's going to get to the decision makers, because it's going through a third party, but it's basically either that, or they're going to harden the power lines, or maybe you get lucky and they do bury it anyways, but those are the options. But you do not have to give your private property. It is 100% volunteer, you do not. And you'll get better service, because even if it's, you're so recalcitrant that, no, those six houses, just nobody wants to be the one that gives it up, you'll get hardened poles and power lines in the back, and it'll be better. So those, it seems like those are the options. And if you want to try to take advantage and get it buried, I think that you guys should talk to each other, because they're not going to help you talk to each other, right? Like, I suggest that you guys talk to each other, I, you know, I wish that they knew more about who's in the segment, because again, I really feel like this was divide and conquer. Like, I, I really don't see how this rollout could have been any more inefficient in terms of getting people on board. Because now you got people that are going to be like, hey, I signed that, get me out of it, I don't, I thought I had to, or I was going to get a giant pole in my front yard. So I, unfortunately, this is a self-inflicted wound, because I don't, guys, I don't want to be a bad partner, but please, come to my block, please, okay? I do not want, keep the project moving, all right? But it's just that, like, measure twice, cut once, we could have had this meeting six months ago, and we wouldn't have had a bunch of people upset. But because of how it got rolled out, and how people, how it was communicated to people, everybody was getting, and then it became the telephone game, and then we, we, we've spent, I don't like meetings that go this long, you guys should know this, but this was important to talk about. So that was my attempt to try to summarize it. Does anybody have any other comments on the council?
Through the chair, maybe for the communication, and I'm just reiterating what I said, can we maybe set something up where the residents, we could all come together in a public forum? I think they will feel more comfortable. I think it's a better idea, so everybody could come together, you could address their questions, and, you know, maybe get to that point a little bit quicker, you know? So we could set something up. Erica?
Ask questions.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's...
Ask them.
Huh?
Ask questions to them.
That, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, for you guys to ask them questions, and they can answer your questions.
I, I don't know if that's something that we need to do, but I think that they need to ask the questions. You guys have, you guys have questions, you need to talk to FPNL, they've got, they've got a program that they're putting into place. We cannot, I, listen, I, we as the city, we're willing to say, hey, do it on public right of way, you don't have to put it on the resident's property. They, that's, that's the one thing that was not case by case, they don't want to do it. They, it has to, they don't want it in rights of ways, they're not doing it in rights of ways, they're not going to do it in rights of ways. So that's it, that, my understanding is that that ship sailed, I didn't, I didn't see any wiggle room on that, right?
Correct.
So really, at the city level, outside of communicating to you guys, because if it had not been for us bringing both parties together so that you guys could give your concerns, and they could explain the truth about what's happening, unless I'm missing something, I feel like that's where we're at. You're going to get better service, whether it's hardened in the back, or you find somebody to do it in the front. Again, I feel like it's an inefficient way for you guys to communicate, and it puts the, you know, the onus on the residents to try to organize to communicate with you, you guys are going to get, I mean, look, if, if FPNL, again, at the end of the day, this is a project, you want to move on, you want to eventually get the whole city, I want you to eventually get the whole city, start with LaVilla Drive. But we got a venue, if you guys want to come out and, and have people come out, let's do it, right? We'll, we'll senior center, we'll pick a date, and they can come out, and they'll ask you all the questions, it'll, it'll make it easier. You might have some people saying, like, I'm backing out, forget you, might have some people, yes, like, I feel like it, it kind of stinks that you went and knocked on a bunch of doors, and in some ways, you're kind of starting over, but again, unfortunately, it didn't get, it didn't get launched correctly, since I didn't know about it until like, three weeks ago.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've, we've done town hall meetings before.
Okay.
They're, they're specific to Storm Secure Underground Program.
Okay.
We're happy to do one here at your desire, so just give us a date, and we'll look at our calendars, make sure the team is available, and we'll be there, and we'll address all the questions, we can have a dialogue.
What will FPNL do, since you have the addresses of the people that are in the zones that are being affected? What, will you communicate? If we give you a venue and we set up a date, will you guys communicate to them, come out?
No, I, I think it's, when we've done them in the past, the way that we've done them, you guys advertise to your constituency.
Okay.
And they can come, because even if it's, they're not affected, they may be next to, you know, side by side to where we're getting it, and they have, may have questions, so we don't really pick and select who, we, we're open to everybody who wants to come and ask.
And I ask everybody who signed up to please put their addresses here, so that at least I can make sure that you guys get contacted personally, you guys can talk to your neighbors. I think that it's, I think that it's a good thing that they're willing to come out and have you guys talk to them directly. We will provide the venue, we'll pick a date, we'll coordinate with them, I want to make sure you guys get every opportunity to get your questions out. I think that it was at least productive to have this whole conversation, not with the fact that it was, it was an hour and a half long, but I'm glad that you guys, I want to thank you guys.
Apologize for that.
You guys, no, no worries, I just, again, I, I like for things to be efficient, and this wasn't the most efficient start to the project.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Back to the same thing about people that have signed. Our peeps go here, and tomorrow they won't, they'll miss that meeting, but the ones that are here, you don't need to ask any more questions, aside from going directly to them and saying, I signed this, I think it was on false pretenses, I wanted you to consider something different. What are the actual steps? An email to which one, who's going to be the point person?
There's an email up there, feel free to, I can provide, you all have my email, I have cards here, they can send it to me, send it, copy me, actually, and send it to that email there, and we'll make sure that they, that we will reach out, and we will, you know, do whatever we need to do to, so they can back out, I guess.
Okay.
So now's the time to do it, it cannot be done, let's just be clear on that, once So now's the time to do it. It cannot be done. Let's just be clear on that. Once construction starts because by that time, it's it's a done deal. We have a securitiesment and it's a legal document. Your attorney can vouch for that. So you know, that just gets tricky. And we don't want to, we don't want to get to that, right? So we want to make sure we know now who are the folks that do not want to participate. That have expressed that they don't want to participate. We need the list as soon as possible because we, again, there's like nine signatures left and you know, the year's running by fast, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So then we'll give direction to staff to uh find a venue and date and coordinate with Addis. And then uh we will uh send that out. Please, if you signed up and you want to get a personal email with information about it, uh, because I want to make sure at least you guys who took the the effort to come out here to to not miss that opportunity. Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. That was like a breach birth, uh, getting that, getting through that. Okay, thank you, Addis.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are moving on to approval of council minutes. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the council minutes for the regular meeting of September 8th, 2025.
I said a motion to uh approve the council minute minutes.
Second.
Okay. Call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Dion?
Yes.
Councilman Lamas?
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have no reports from boards and commissions. Uh, we go move on to public hearings. We've got our millage rate and budget. We will start with 9A. Take it away.
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting the final millage rate for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026, and the amount of 6.8100 mils, which is 7.21% higher than than the rollback rate of 6.3521 mils, announcing the percentage increase in property taxes and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. If there's anybody interested in speaking on the final millage rate, you may do so now. Opened up for public hearing. It's okay, you can come on up. Just state your name and address. It's about this item, correct?
Yes, the millage.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Jeannie Raymond.
Please speak into the mic. You can pull it down close to you.
My name is Jeannie Raymond, uh, 621 Oriole Avenue. Um, I'm very concerned about the the millage rates. Um, we're having now increases from the county in our water, our sewer. They just passed the the budget hearing was, you know, a couple of days ago. Uh, we have had an enormous overvaluation of our homes. Two years ago, a house that was 350 was now like 700 and change. So I know that I know that by law, you can only, if you're homesteaded, you can only increase it up to 3%. But we've had these McMansions built beautiful homes that are no, you know, they're buku bucks. They're like, you know, a lot of zeros and a lot of commas. So I'm sure that the property appraisers office has collected a lot of taxes on these homes. And there's been a slew of sales in Miami Springs. It was like, you know, we were going like this was the place to be. Um, and which brought up our property values to unaffordable prices. So I'm speaking out of ignorance. I'm not looking at any data or anything, but just in my financial mind, I'm thinking there's buku bucks in property taxes just sitting there. Uh, that I don't think that we need to have our millage increased. I think we really need, we have people on fixed income. We're losing people. People are leaving Florida because they can no longer afford to live here. And um, some people are hostage in their homes because they have nowhere else to go. It's unaffordable and I really hope, I grew up here, I've been here from when the hills were invented, but um I'd like to preserve our city and I think part of our community staying what it is is keeping it affordable. And you know, we have a lot of elderly, a lot of, you know, generations after generations and fixed incomes. And I really, really, I beg you to roll it back to the very least. We have a lot of money that's going here and there. I think we could tighten our belt in our expenses, be a little bit more frugal. Um, so I beg you, please roll back the millage as much as possible. There's buku bucks in the assessments of all these MacMillian houses. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eric, anybody online?
Uh, no sir.
Okay, all right. So we closed public hearing for 9A, the final millage rate. Um, I, Mr. City Manager, would you just like to clarify once again, oh, in what direction our millage rate is going and and how that fits into the trajectory over the recent future?
Yes.
Or recent past?
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, our millage rate over the last, I'm I'm going to say over the last five years. I know certainly over the last two that we've been decreasing steadily um to the point that, you know, we can, we can continue of addressing some uh maintenance issues, deferred maintenance issues on a lot of our facilities. The city has a lot of facility, a lot of programs. Um, so I'm we're able to uh balance a budget, lower the millage rate and address much needed maintenance in this in this particular budget. Um, I take budgeting on a year to year basis, um, because with property values and especially the way the market's been lately, uh, you you just don't know.
There's no guarantee.
And especially, you know, you have Governor DeSantis talking about making changes to the property tax rate. So I I don't take next year for granted. I don't know what next year holds, but this year we we tried to do the best as possible and um continue. I mean, I can't ignore some of these items anymore.
And we're on an eight year run of lowering the millage rate, which is a good thing. Obviously, you could always uh lower it more. Uh, but we've mentioned many times that people's property values go up, so they are paying more. So it's only right for us to lower the minute millage so that it's uh, it's less of a percentage. And remember that what the city gets is just a fraction of the overall taxes that you pay. But can you speak to uh something uh that that resident just said? Although property taxes are increasing and we we know that, you know, the the average cost of a home. But can you kind of speak to on the city side? What increases are you encountering that you have to contend with? So we know that that property values are going up, but do you want to speak to insurance, medical insurance, all the all the kind of things that? Because you got to balance the budget. Uh, yes, property values are going up, but what's going up for the city that we have to contend with as we balance a budget?
First and foremost, personnel costs. Personnel cost is the greatest cost of any of any organization. That that there's increases, especially since we have a union negotiated a collective bargaining agreement. We have uh certain cost of living adjustments that have to be done there and as well as the 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 general employees overall. Um, then on top of that, we've had an increase in health insurance. Um, that contributed to the costs. Um, and on top of that, we've had increases in, um, let me see. Well, well, property insurance over the years, this past year, it it kind of went down. Hence why we were able to lower the the millage rate a little bit. Because this past year, our renewal noted, our renewal came in cheaper. Um, so um then also we have the city, and it's a wonderful city, but the city has a lot of assets, a lot of facilities. We have a uh the rec center, we have the aquatic center, we have
The golf course.
The golf course. Those are all things that need to be maintained and and I'm replacing in this budget, I think, four or five air conditioners on the in in the in the rec center, which need to be replaced. And it's only working on four right now, four or five. And there are 16 of them on the roof. Um, so we're we're starting a program to replace at least five, try to on a yearly basis until they're all under warranty. Uh, um, then we have in the the senior center, for example, senior center, um, the the from the general fund, we contribute about $700,000 towards the the senior center. We get a lot of grants that come in. Uh, that we get to have a lot of grants, thankfully, from the state and also from the federal government through the Alliance for Aging, where we can provide the programs.
But that's soft money.
But that's exactly. But we have to, I mean, there is the cost associated with that. Um, police, we have an issue on 36th Street, right? We have, um, it's, nobody likes to talk about it. There's a lot of crime there. That crime trickles in on that side of the of the uh of the city. Um, I can't make any cuts there to to the police. And and I'll I'll give the chief a lot of credit. He has gone through every single one of his programs and his budget only went up overall, maybe like, was it like 2%, 3%? So he's found ways in contracts that have been old. He's canceled them. He's changed them. He's renegotiated them. So we can, so we can save uh on that end.
I'm sorry to drag you into a conversation about the budget because that's the next public hearing item, but just so right, safe to say that uh although property values are going up, our ability to maintain our city assets, our ability to expand services, which is what we're doing in our exit, our ability to run the city is getting more expensive, not cheaper, correct? No doubt that it is, just like everything else is getting more expensive. Um, so uh, the fact that we're lowering the millage, uh, given that, I think, is a testament to Chris and and the job that you've been doing. So I am personally pleased that we're lowering the millage rate. So would anybody like to chime in?
Just wanted to add that it is a great testament to a great job, the fact that we managed to balance the budget, lower the millage rate and not lose any services to our citizens. So it's usually in any budget, you got to give something up and we've managed to keep everything up.
And I would include that we increase the reserves. You guys may remember that a couple of years ago, we had to balance a reserve, we had to balance the budget by going into our reserves to the point that it was under the level that we said is like, like, you know, the last stand. Uh, and we've been able to build it back up, which puts us on a on a stronger financial footing as as a city. So uh, we hope that at the state level, even though some crazy ideas are going back and forth, uh, I think that the smart money is on the fact that they're going to expand some of the exemptions, particularly for uh, older residents of Florida. That should be a relief for uh for uh people that, you know, as as was mentioned, you're kind of stuck in your home. It was funny because we were at the Miami Realtors. Uh, and they were doing a presentation. They were talking about like people are sitting on their equity and I was thinking to myself like, because where are you going to go unless you're going to Ohio? I don't know what you're going to do with all that equity. Because if you sell it and you're going to stay here, uh, it's not, it's not worth it. So I understand. Uh, and I feel bad for the people that are building the McMansions because they're
Chair, if I could make a comment about you need to look at all the tax benefits that are out there. Um, when my dad became, when my mom passed away, I looked at um his other than his home set exemption, um, and I got him the maximum amount of tax breaks that I could. So uh, if you feel that you're entitled to tax breaks, go to the property appraisers webpage. There's forms there you can fill out and submit with financial forms, with back statements, with social security um invoices, checks, and see if we can get a break that way.
Good point. Thank you.
The chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so our our millage rate or our taxes is only a portion of the taxes that we pay. The bigger portion is is coming from the county. So I also recommend uh reaching out to our commissioner. Um, she's very accessible and maybe I know right now they're going through their budget pro- uh process as well. And there's a lot going on there. It's a little bit complicated. Uh, but maybe you could reach out to her office or if you want to reach out to me, maybe I could uh, you know, um make that conversation easier. But yeah, no, I'm proud to say I'm part of a council that we've managed to uh lower the millage rate and maintain our services. So.
All right, thank you. Okay, there's no further discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve 10A.
Make the motion to approve 10A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, not 10A. I'm sorry, 9A. Misread that.
Make the motion to approve 9A.
Thank you. And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Dion?
Yes.
Councilman Lamas?
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, we move on to 9B, a resolution about our final budget.
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026. Providing for expenditure of budgeted funds, providing for budgetary controls, providing for grants and gifts, providing for budget amendments, providing for encumbrances and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Uh, JC, is there anything you want to say? I mean, you kind of, I led you into talking about the budget. Is there anything else you wanted to add before I opened it up for discussion?
There's no change from from first reading up to now.
Okay, thank you. Members of the council? Any discussion on the budget?
I I like to to the chair. I like to commend the process because I've been reading the news about our neighboring, um, some some of the cities in South Florida, let's say how uh there's been a lot of um little bad words, really ill feeling among members of their city council and their city government. And um, this has been a very respectful process and uh so hats off to you and to Chris for guiding us through this process.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve 9B.
A motion?
Um, excuse me, Mayor, we would need to open
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I'd like to open it up for public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak on item 9B, our final budget for the fiscal year. You may do so now. No one? All right, thank you. Close the public hearing. We have a motion. Did we get a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch
I motion to approve 9B.
He made the motion.
He made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I answered. I asked and he made it.
Second the motion?
All right, so we have a motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Dion?
Yes.
Councilman Lamas?
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so we move on to the consent agenda. I would like to, we moved 10A to new business. So and we set that in the order of business at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
So we took out 10A.
Yes, we did. We moved that to new business. Do we have a second to approve the the consent agenda?
A motion.
We can do that with a voice vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. All right, so the motion carries. I did just want to take a second because I've had some people that have asked about uh the consent agenda. I know that we've had some some meetings that go kind of fast and it it seems like speed dating. Uh, I know that it could look like we're passing a bunch of items at once without a lot of public discussion. I just wanted to explain the process. Um, the consent agenda is is meant to allow the city council to act quickly on routine, non controversial items so that we could dedicate our time to important controversial items like like the FPNL thing and the things we're doing on 36th Street. Um, so the items that are on the consent agenda are typically routine and administrative, uh, or they've been thoroughly vetted. So when we're paying our bills, things that have been budgeted, things that have already been reviewed and approved by staff, that doesn't need to be debated. It's a budgeted item. It's in there. If you're authorizing routine contracts, if it's something that's just, uh, it's it's a tool to make things uh more efficient when it comes to our meeting. The reason you don't hear a lot of public debate on some of those items is that we've already done our homework. So every one of the members of the council gets a briefing. We get the backup to the agenda. So we see all the consent agenda items and we have a briefing. That wasn't always the case. Uh, when I started on the council, uh, we try to encourage, highly encourage all council members. As a matter of fact, when we we began as a council, that was one of the things that we talked about about that we wanted everybody to go to briefings. In the past, remember, I've been on the council for a long time. In the past, we had some people that wouldn't take briefings. And then they would pull items from the consent agenda and start asking questions and kind of blindsiding people with questions. Uh, it's my belief that if you have questions about routine things, they should be asked during a briefing, which means that you should take briefings. And so I, we have all committed to taking our briefing. So if you see us passing a bunch of things with the consent agenda, it's not that we are just glossing it over. It says that we've already uh met any concerns. And at any time, if somebody has a concern, they can pull an item like I did today. Uh, and it could be discussed publicly, but otherwise, uh, we're committing to taking our briefings and being prepared so that things uh go quickly. And again, all of the documents for any of these items, whether we debate them publicly or not, are all online for the public to review. You guys could review it just like we review it. And if you have questions, you could call us, you could call city staff. This is all an attempt to uh make things efficient, but yet still fully transparent. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So we are done with the consent agenda. We have no old business. We have new business. Sorry, Capote, that you had to wait so long, but I'm going to call up a report by the Police Department on the 2024-2025 Annual Red Light Camera and Speedzod Survey Summary. police department on the 2024-2025 annual red light camera and speed zone survey summary. This is a public hearing. Where, uh, when should we do the hearing?
So, this is a new state law, new-ish, um, you are required to have a public hearing, the, the police department will provide their data and the public is able to comment on it or ask questions, um, as any other public hearing, so.
Okay, so.
The chair. Um, I don't know how long, I don't wanna rush you, but I have to, uh, use the restroom.
I think that qualifies as TBI.
Yeah.
Councilman, at any time, you can, you can leave the dais, we have a quorum and we'll be, we'll be okay.
Stop drinking water, man.
Yeah, I mean, you're on your fifth cup of water.
I didn't wanna be rude, I just.
Thank God it was number one.
Welcome if you got them.
We've had much worse happen during our council meetings. Okay, Capote, thank you for being here, please share with us.
My pleasure, thank you for having me. I'm here to read into the record the statistics for the 2024-25 red light camera survey summary. For the reporting period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025, the red light camera program issued a total of 21,599 notices of violations. Of that, 79 were contested, 13 of the contested notices of violation were dismissed, 66 of the contested notices of violation were upheld, 13,042 of the notices of violation were paid, and 7,756 of the notices of violation resulted in uniform traffic citations. All payments were deposited into the general fund for our new school speed zone camera program, excuse me, during the reporting period of July 1st, 2023, no wait, that's the other paper, sorry. That's for comparison, uh, for the red lights of last year. Beginning of school year, August 14th, 2025 through September 3rd, 2025, we had 1,209 notices of violation issued, 81 of those were, have been paid, zero have been contested, uh, as such, zero have been upheld, zero have been dismissed, and zero have entered into a uniform traffic citation phase at this point. And all of those payments to the Miami Springs were deposited into the school zone violation account. That concludes my report.
All right. You got a fan club, dude. All right, I'd like to open it up for public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to speak, respond to the summary that we were just giving by the police department on our annual red light cameras and speed zone surveys? All right, don't speed, please, don't spill.
It's working.
It is working, it is working. All right, a closing public hearing? All right, do we have any comment?
To the chair, um, can you tell us roughly how many of those violations were from actual Miami Springs residents?
I can't throw you a number, but I cleared, today, I cleared over 300 violations, at least half.
At least half.
There's a lot of residents.
Okay, we should know better in the city.
Yeah, 100%, and the high school's the big one.
The high school.
The high school's the big one, on both sides, on North Royal side and on the Linape side. Lot of EG residents too, cause they, it's a cut through.
I wanted to also mention that I attend the red light hearing, camera hearings, and they're, they're run very professionally. The advocate that's here, John, um, I, he gives people the benefit of the doubt to prove their case, and our police department puts on a very compelling argument when they show the video. So I wanna congratulate the police department for, for coming through for that.
Thank you, pleasure.
Quick, sorry, to the chair, question, what percentage have we seen dropped every month?
Well, we haven't been running it that long, so, uh, the program started off in the warning phase, uh, May, before school let out, in that one month time period, we issued near 5,000 warnings, and I just reported in the first month of school, we just did 1,209 violations, so do the math. It's, it's gone down significantly, but there, it's, you're right, the residents should know better. It's a high number of residents, especially for people who come through the same route every day. You know, you know that there's cameras at the high school, slow down, you know, there's cameras, you know. There, you can always mix in the, uh, the odd duck that comes in from Miami Springs that doesn't know the area and might, uh, pick up a violation here or there, but I see a lot of repeats. Today, I issued two to one person, three to somebody else. Repeat, repeat, repeat. Maybe they'll learn when they get the violations in the mail. If not, oh, it's a violation.
Out of the 13,000 paid, uh, do you know roughly how much was deposited?
I don't have that information, no sir. 13,000 of the NOVs paid, the number shifts, the minimum, the minimum amount for an NOV is 158, the maximum amount is 408, depending on if they paid it right away, if they requested a hearing, did they take the plea? The, the number shifts, so no, not.
The base is 158.
The base is 158, so at the very least, 13,042 times 158.
158.
Yeah, it's always gets broken down.
I'd say 70.
I think you're right, I think it's 78.
What span, what time span was that?
That was July 1st of '24 through June 30th of '25.
Chief, I know that, that your account, did the, did the, uh, the IG account for the police put out that very polished video that you guys did? You guys did a great job with that video. Cause I saw it on yours, I was just, what is your handle for Miami Springs PD?
At Miami Springs PD.
At Miami Springs PD, and you have a video explaining everything, explaining, uh, any confusion, cause I know there was an out about like, the, the, you know, what, what, you know, what were the times? You guys explained everything, uh, there. Uh, Erica, do you know, do you know if we reposted, uh, that on the city one? Okay, so follow us on Instagram, follow Miami Springs Police on Instagram to get, uh, the information from the source, cause you guys did a really good job with that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Okay, so, do we have to?
Take a vote? No.
Okay, all right, so we're good. All right, so, thank you, Capote.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Okay, so, moving on to the discussion that we moved from the consent agenda, uh, which was a resolution of the city council authorizing participation in a lawsuit. So, uh, our esteemed, uh, city attorney, would you like to take that over and explain to us?
Sure, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you've all been briefed in your individual briefings that you all took, thank you, um, we've, we've briefed you on SB 180 a few times, um, you may recall, and for members of the public that are listening, um, earlier in the summer, before SB 180 became law, we considered requesting that the governor veto SB 180. Ultimately, the governor signed the bill into law and it took effect July 1st. Um, my firm is leading a lawsuit against the state to enjoin the enforcement of SB 180. Um, what that means is that we have created a coalition of cities and counties throughout the state in order to get the law paused, stopped, and joined. Um, in order for us to move forward, um, internally, we determined that we would need at least 10 cities or counties in order to move forward. We've met that threshold internally. Um, so there have been multiple media reports throughout the state of those cities and counties that have joined the lawsuit. So actually Roger let me know, if he's still listening, that he was reviewing the complaint that's being worked on by our litigation team. Um, so what does SB 180 do? As we've shared with you a few times now, um, SB 180, as my partner, as one of my partners has said, is probably the, the largest assault on home rule powers of a city or local government since the 1950s or 60s. Why is that important? SB 180, while it's intended to be for emergency, emergency regulations from the state level, um, at the last part of the legislative session, the bill was amended to include provisions that affect our cities and counties, and what those provisions do is twofold. Um, section 28 of SB 180 prohibits all local government initiated ordinances, so key word, government initiated, not developer initiated, that impose more restrictive or burdensome comprehensive plan amendments, land development regulations, or procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of site plans, development permits, or development orders for the period commencing retroactively to August 1st of last year through October 1st, 2027. So effectively, for a three-year period, cities and counties are unable to adopt legislation that they initiate, that the local government initiates, that may be deemed more restrictive or burdensome. And so, um, what is ultimately considered a more restrictive or burdensome, like, um, regulation or procedure is something that will be left to the courts to decide, but that's the language from the, from the new law. Beyond that, um, and beyond October 1st, 2027, local governments are further prohibited from adopting or enacting more restrictive or burdensome regulations of the sort I've just mentioned for a period of one year after a storm makes landfall, if we are located within 100 miles of the track of that hurricane. So traditionally, the governor will issue a declaration of emergency and some parts of the state are included, others aren't. So what this does is, if we're within 100 miles of that track, we can also not make any regulations that are considered more burden, more restrictive or burdensome. So, um, we will be proceeding with the litigation, it should be filed, I think later this week or before the end of the month, is the, is the plan last I spoke with our litigators. Um, in order to join the lawsuit and in order for, for no one city or county to bear the burden of, of litigation, our, our firm is, is doing it at a $10,000 per city or county rate at the trial level. Beyond that, it goes to $5,000 for a, uh, an appellate case, uh, and if beyond that to the Florida Supreme Court, another $5,000. So we will be proceeding. I understand that there are pros and cons to legislation, you never know what's the result of legislation, of litigation is going to be. Um, we, we hope that the litigation is, uh, results in a positive result for cities and counties, uh, but we also hope that maybe the legislator will also, uh, take action and change the law and listen to the needs of the cities and counties that are trying to adopt regulations. We do understand that there may be, one of the examples that's been given, let me say it this way, is that a, a city, after an emergency, after a hurricane, may want to improve its local regulations so that people are less affected by the flooding effects of a, of a hurricane. And so you might decide, in this city, we need to raise our, our, our base flood elevation. And so that may be more restrictive, right? But you're doing it in order to prevent a flood, in order to prevent someone's home from being damaged in a hurricane. So while the legislation, SB 180, was intended to be for protection of, of our state against these types of emergencies, at the 11th hour, the legislator added this language that hamstrings our abilities to do things. So what I've shared with all of you is, whatever you decide to do tonight, we will advise you accordingly on projects and ordinances that you wish to do. Uh, as I've said to all of you, I know the big project that we're all working on right now is the Southeast Springs project, obviously, that will result in, uh, legislation at the city level, government initiated ordinances. We will, I, I don't want you to change, or your city to change what you want to do, um, and, and your visions and, and the creative juices that are coming from that process, move forward, but when it comes time to do the legislation, we will have to look at that legislation with a keen eye for how it complies with SB 180.
And pray that no storms come.
Well, even if no storms come, right now, until October 1st, 2027, because of four hurricanes that did come.
Within 100 miles.
Because of hurricanes Milton, Ian, and there's two more that, the names I'm, I'm forgetting right now, but because of those, we are already, from August 1st, 2024 through October 1st, 2027.
Already there.
The law prevents us from imposing anything more restrictive or burdensome, regardless of anything that may come.
Yeah.
Beyond that date is when we really are looking at those, that, that 100 mile radius.
All right, so thank, thank you, Heidi, I think you summarized that pretty well. Um, I, I understand, uh, my brother lives in Cape Coral, so he had a bunch of storms that went right over him. Like, I understand the need to do things to kind of, uh, expedite rebuilding after a hurricane, because it's, it's traumatic and it's, and it's, it's burdensome on the people that are go through it. And I understand that, you know, cities wanna build back better after a storm, try to do things to kind of prevent, uh, you know, things like, uh, you know, uh, post hurricane effects happening, but somewhere along the line, they went like one stop too far on the Metro Rail station and they ended up with legislation that, that included some pretty, pretty sweeping provisions that apply statewide and that basically, uh, you know, every municipality that, that I've read about thinks that it's in an overreach and it freezes local planning, uh, and it limits, uh, I mean, it erodes home rule, like, like you said, and it limits our ability to be able to address challenges by updating our codes, and that's just, you know, a bridge too far. Like, it started, uh, about how to, you know, rebuild after a hurricane and it's turned into stripping us, uh, of our municipalities' ability to, uh, to make rules locally. So, uh, there's entire counties that, that have gone, that have signed up to, to litigate against it. I think that if, just my opinion, if you already have, uh, the, enough cities on board to move forward with that class action suit, I, I, I personally don't think that we have to lead from the front on this and, and be a named defendant. I think that the, uh, my reading is that there's pretty broad-based consensus that from, from municipal governments that this just can't fly, and there's probably going to be adjustments since this came in in the 11th hour. So I think that it's good that, and this isn't the first time that we talk about this publicly at the meetings, uh, I just, if I were giving my opinion, I think that we should monitor it closely, but I, I don't think that we need to go the step of paying to be a named defendant, because I think there's, there are so many municipalities that are, that, that, that this is going to probably get adjusted, um, so that's just, uh, my two cents worth. But I, I open it up for discussion from my colleagues. Anyone? Okay?
To the chair.
Thank you.
I mean, um, obviously, a lot of the things that you just mentioned, there's a lot of pros and cons to this, and it seems like the state is constantly, uh, nibbling at her feet and more, um, but I think considering, um, put us out there on a, you know, on a name basis, I think it might not be productive for us, and, and I would argue, and I think the attorneys will have to argue in reference to our rezoning, we're at a level that we have seen no development, so all we are doing is to better the, the zoning areas, so I don't know where their argument would be, that we were restricting them from being able to do something, but I think for now, I think, uh, I'd stay on the sidelines, I would agree with you, Mayor, and, um, you know, and take that route versus us take the forefront.
Okay.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I've tried to research SB 180, um, on my own, I can't find anything to justify it. The only thing I found was through the Reason Foundation, which is Reason Magazine, which I read once in a while, and even then, I referenced the original intention of SB 180. This version of it is not what I think people signed up for. Um, and, um, you know, what you said about October 2027, what I read, it would be extended every time the city's in the path of a storm, and it's just, it's very vague, it smells to me like government overreach, um, once again, from Tallahassee, to the city manager's point about property taxes that the. manager's point about property taxes, that discussion going on in Tallahassee about eliminating property taxes. Why is that happening? Why are they talking about this? Why is this bill being forced, or was signed into law, forced on our throat? I don't like it. I don't like what they're up to. I don't trust them. But I understand the mayor's point and the councilman's point about, if you have already your parties involved in the lawsuit, and if we were the deciding vote, I would say yes, I think, if we were the deciding factor to go forward with this lawsuit. Correct me if I'm wrong, we, as a city, would benefit from any decision should it be deemed unconstitutional, correct? I mean, if Tallahassee decides that SB 180 is unconstitutional, that applies to every city municipality in the state. You can't pick and choose what's...
That is a judicial matter, right?
Yeah. It's uncertain. The law recently changed, and Heidi can explain it to you, where in some cases, in civil matters, you have to be a party of the legislation to reap the benefits, right? The question is, if we find, if the, and the judge would have to decide this, right? If they're talking about the constitutionality of a law, then how are they going to just say, okay, only these 20 municipalities don't have to, and the rest, we're going to apply it to that?
Well, I don't know how that works.
I don't either. And Heidi and I were having this conversation earlier, and she's like, yeah, I see that point as well, but we don't know how a judge would do that.
So to answer the question, to be clear, I cannot assure you that without being a named plaintiff, the city would be protected. I can't. We have had internal discussions, and frankly speaking, Roger and some of my partners are, we have a whole team that's working on this legis, on, I keep wanting to say legislation, on this legislative lawsuit, so to speak. But because of the way, I think practically, if a law is deemed unconstitutional, I would like to say, yes, of course, it's not going to be applied to anyone. But I don't know, at this point, what other avenues are going to be explored and what defenses are going to be raised. I just don't know. So would I like to say, yes, you should be okay remaining out of the lawsuit and reap the benefits, so to speak, of the lawsuit moving forward? I would like to say that, but I cannot give you that certainty.
Because I even read about some counties that had stormwater and flooding issues, and that's something that hits us home. And even this bill has interfered with the local government's fixing of storm sewer, stormwater, stormwater runoff. So I'm looking at it like, okay, what are they after? What do they want? I mean, but...
Through the chair.
Sure, go ahead.
So if we're not a named plaintiff on the case, what that means is, if you win the lawsuit, it would only be for those municipalities that are named plaintiffs?
Potentially. Potentially.
The last time the city participated in a lawsuit was for that Form 6, right?
Correct.
The Form 6 one, when the injunction came, it applied to all cities, even if you weren't part of the lawsuit. So it was, that was, I guess, implemented across the board. Will this happen here? I don't know. I don't know. Common sense to me says, yeah, how are you going to enforce a law on all the other cities except for 20 that were part of the lawsuit? Makes sense to me.
So there's precedent. There's a precedent to have it applied to all cities and municipalities and counties.
And I think, J.C., when we were speaking about this earlier, not at almost 10 o'clock at night, there's a distinction between the, an injunction being entered, which is what we're seeking at the front end of the lawsuit, right? Up front, we are asking, hey, state, hey, court, please enjoin the enforcement of this law. We might win on that, lose in the long term. We might lose up front, win on the long term. We might lose all over, we might win at both stages of the battle, right? So when I say that, if ultimately we win, and the law is deemed unconstitutional...
Unconstitutional for everyone.
Yes, it's unconstitutional. But from here to the end of that lawsuit, when a court ultimately, and we hope, deems as unconstitutional, what happens in the interim? Who's protected? And so that's where it's unclear.
Through the chair, ask a good question to Heidi. Heidi, what is, what is your, what does that timeline look like? What are we talking? Are we talking months, years? What is that? How does this play out, should we or not participate?
I think you're looking at least at several months of litigation, if not years. By way of example, the Form 6 litigation started, and within a few months, we were able to obtain an injunction. Not a whole lot has happened since then. So the case is still open years later, but there hasn't been a final, final resolution of the case. So I know some of you have more experience with litigation than others. It can be a long road.
Through the chair. So some of the named plaintiffs, maybe since it's a long process of litigation, could get some emergency relief in the process, is what you're saying, or like, right when you start the case? Yeah, at the end, if it's ruled unconstitutional, it'll open it up for everybody, but the ones that are named plaintiffs could get immediate relief.
I'm not saying that, that people who aren't, or cities or entities that are not named won't get the relief. I just can't assure you that. As I sit here tonight, I can't give you that guarantee.
Could we jump on at that point? Does that...
So in the Form 6 litigation, we added plaintiffs after the fact. There was sort of an initial tranche, and then there was a later tranche, but it was up to a certain point. You can't just, right before a trial, start adding parties, right? So if, I will, of course, whatever you choose tonight, I will, of course, keep you informed as to the evolution of that lawsuit. And if I am informed that there's an opportunity to join the lawsuit in the future, or, hey, Heidi, you need to let your clients know that this is the drop dead deadline in order to join, I will certainly advise you of that.
It strikes me that bad ideas usually start off as good ideas, and then they turn bad. I think that the way this was decided was hastily done, as you mentioned, at the 11th hour. The fact that it, we're already retroactively under the prohibition because of storms that had passed, and any subsequent storm is just going to renew, you know, like a re-up on that. Everything that I've read and everything, every discussion I've had is that there's just like unanimous disapproval from municipal governments to something that was hastily decided, that was a little, that went a little bit too far. We're all, we're making political decisions here and reading, reading the, you know, we also, some of us know people that are part of the, our state legislature in Tallahassee, so we try to read the tea leaves the best we can. My opinion is that there is such broad-based disapproval with this that I, you know, I mean, if you're asking an attorney to make a prediction of what's going to happen, and in binary terms, you don't have a lot of experience talking to attorneys. They're not going to do that. We're going to make, we're going to make a decision? I am of the opinion that there is just such broad-based disapproval that the state legislature is going to amend what they hastily decided at the 11th hour, rather than get, you know, rather than face the coalition of litigation that's mounting. And I feel like we can, we don't have to be a named plaintiff. I think that cooler heads at the state level, they'll find, they don't want to do this. This was a little bit of an overreach, is the sense I get. There's already plenty of people in line to litigate if necessary. I don't think that we have to lead from the front on this one. I think that we should just monitor it, but, you know, I don't think that we need to pay $10,000 to be a named plaintiff on this one. This seems to me, the way I'm reading it, like something that they're going to adjust and find that right sweet spot, because everybody is against it, as it pertains to municipal government. Just my opinion.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
And we did express our, you know, dislike of this through a letter, right? We wrote a letter to the...
Ultimately, the city did not send a letter.
Oh, no.
Again, I don't, I don't think a resolution of, you know, disapproval would make anything. Like, I think, I think that, again, I'm just, think politically, I get the sense that our lawmakers in Tallahassee are going to see that this is not worth the fight, that it just went one bus stop too far, and that they're probably going to want to amend this because, again, there is no support at the local government level for it. I think that where I stand right now, I'm going to trust the people in Tallahassee that they're going to fix this because they're already, there's a buzzsaw on the way and a whole bunch of litigation, and I think, in this particular sense, we'll be okay to focus on the things that this will get fixed pretty quickly. Just my opinion. Any other comment? What do we, do we need consensus? Are we voting up or down on this as new build, new business? Because this was going to be a resolution to join the lawsuit. Should we vote? Yes, or no?
You would need a motion.
I know, but it is, there has to be a vote. It's not going to be consensus. This is, right?
I would take a vote, just...
Okay, all right. So do we have a motion to either approve or not approve joining the lawsuit? Do we have a motion, one way or the other?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. So the resolution, as it reads, it's a resolution of the city council authorizing participation in a lawsuit, seeking to declare Senate Bill 180, okay, unconstitutional, and an erosion of our ability to make decisions. So do I have a motion to approve this resolution so that we are participating in the lawsuit? Or do I, does somebody make a motion either to approve it?
I guess a motion, a motion to approve, vote yes, and a motion to disapprove, vote no.
No, 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 no. So the resolution is to join the lawsuit. Do I have a motion to join the lawsuit?
A motion to join the lawsuit.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion was to approve the resolution and join, participate in the lawsuit. That was the motion.
Fails for lack of a second?
It failed for lack of a second.
Okay.
Okay. So I think that's enough, right? We don't have, all right, so we don't have to, motion to disapprove. We just, it died.
Correct.
All right. Well, we wish, we wish you good luck in representing all of our municipalities throughout the state, and we think that cooler heads will prevail. At least, we pray.
My only ask is that you ask your state legislators on the Senate and House side...
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think that many of us have, many of us have connections within state legislatures that we know. Please call them, hit them up, let them know, voice your disapproval. I think that they're already hearing from it, and when people are lawyering up, I think they know what is coming. I think that this was just a little bit too far, and the sense I get is that it will be amended. Okay. So that's, we're done with new business. Moving on to 13 other business. We have a request by Vice Mayor Santin to discuss the naming of the dog park after Dr. Tom Campbell, Miami Springs resident and founder of Animal General Hospital. Take it away, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, another great resident, unfortunately, has passed away, but I think it's only fitting, a gentleman who's a longtime resident of Miami Springs, also a go-to vet for many years, I know in my family that we were, and also a person who took the initiative with others, I think Commissioner Rebecca Sosa as well, who put money for this dog park. So I think it's only fitting that, you know, we get an opportunity to name this park under his name.
All right. Would it be great to have added the late Dr. Tom Campbell to the agenda? I did not know. I actually looked him up on, I wasn't familiar with him, never used him as our vet, and I looked him up on the website, and I know that he was the founder, and I know that that animal hospital's been there and has done great work. And if the late Dr. Tom Campbell, given everything that I read that they did, I think that, and I think that he was also involved in bringing the dog park as well, and very supportive of that. So no complaints from me as a way to honor a longtime resident, someone who really left a legacy, as that animal hospital is still going. Any other discussion?
Through the chair. I remember seeing him at the River Cities Festival. He would be the judge at the pet shows. And he was, yeah, he was very dedicated, passionate about animals and pets.
Through the chair. I, as well, didn't have the pleasure of knowing Dr. Campbell, but I have taken, taken it on myself to, I spend a lot of time at the dog park and look after it. By the way, thank you to Public Works for keeping it clean. In my time at the dog park, I've talked to many residents, and they all have great things to say about Dr. Campbell, including how he played a big role in getting that dog park started. So you definitely have my support.
All right. Do we just need consensus to ask staff to work on that? Okay, so do we have consensus on the council to have staff work on that request to name the dog park after Dr. Tom, the late Dr. Tom Campbell?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Make it so. All right. Moving on to reports and recommendations, let's bring it home, our esteemed city attorney, Heidi.
I think that's all for tonight.
Okay. City manager.
The contractor, the county contractor that's working on the bridges, some months, a few months ago, they asked for, they requested complete bridge closure for the entire duration of the project for both bridges, which I told them no.
To be clear, the incoming and outgoing bridges, the swing bridge and the pony bridge that are going in and out of the circle?
Going in and out of the circle over there by Vokachobi.
Yes.
For a myriad of reasons, I said no, we can't do that, mainly because of the traffic that it would cause on East Drive, especially at the beginning of the school year, which they wanted to do. They came back with a revised proposal. Right now, the way their contract currently states, what their current contract states, is that they will be working on one lane at a time on that bridge. And so their request is, can we close from 9:00 to 6:00, that one lane closure? Can we close on a nightly basis while we're working on the bridges? The entire bridge from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. I would speed things up by about a month or month and a half, maybe two months, but it would, the biggest thing is the safety. You don't have, it's already narrow enough as it is on those bridges, and you would close the entire bridge for their employees to work and work quicker. I don't have an objection to it. That's why I was bringing it to fruition. They met with the police department a number of times to come up with his game plan, and if they can get them in and out of here quicker, I'm all in favor.
I think that after a lot of negotiating back and forth, I think that those closures, and the closures will last, how long? And both bridges at the same time, or one bridge at a time?
It's only one bridge at a time while they're working on it.
And roughly a month?
Working the bridges, they're going to be open.
Right. And roughly a month of closures from 10:00 to 5:00?
No, it's actually going to be, like, it's going to shave off a month or two.
Okay. How long will the 10:00 to 5:00 closures be on one bridge at a time?
I think it's going to be maybe like 10 months, I'm mistaken.
Okay. So we'll have closures. So we'll have to, there was going to have to be closures anyways.
Yes.
Right?
They were going to, they were going to start closing one lane at a time.
Yeah.
So instead of doing that...
Yeah. The initial proposal was to close it all day long for...
Completely.
Yeah, which, that was a nonstarter.
That was a nonstarter.
Right.
Not even entertaining that.
Yeah, okay. So we negotiated it down to closures from 10:00 to 5:00. It'll be one bridge at a time.
Total closure, 10 to 5.
Total closures from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
They're not working on weekends, whatever, they're not working, the bridges are open.
All right. Okay.
Is this, is it just a barrier?
Is this, is it just a barricade, or will you, will we have to pay to post the police officer?
We don't have to pay, they will be bearing all the cost. And they would have to follow FDOT standards.
Okay. Any other comments? So that's just an update? You've already moved forward with that? That's the plan?
I was waiting for you guys.
Sure.
I haven't given them the go-ahead yet.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with moving forward with that plan?
I have a quick question. How is this compared to the project on Oakwood? Because I know that that's kind of lingered on and...
This is completely different. This is a county project. The city doesn't have anything to do with this particular project other than I want to make sure that our residents and businesses are not inconvenienced while this is going on, or inconvenienced as little as possible. So yeah, this is a completely different project. This is a bridge rehabilitation project, where they scrape up all of the, you know, rust and rework it, repaint it, put some lights in it. So yeah, they're kind of refurbishing the bridge.
Sounds good.
Yeah, the, the one in Oakwood, completely different story. That one, there were a lot of components to it. Most recently, we had Miami-Dade County come in and replace the justice concrete pipe. That was there, and that kind of delayed the finishing of the project a little bit. But they, we, they're done, and we're hopefully reaching the home stretch. Once the electric, or once the electrical, sorry. Once the pump, the stormwater pump station is up and running, we'll be able to operate it even with a generator. So we're just finishing, we're just waiting for them to finish basically the electrical portion of it. While we wait for FPL to drop the, you know, power there permanently.
Thank you.
Through the chair. 10 months is still a little bit of inconvenience, no doubt about it. So is there a way of us, do we have recourse on performance timeline from them? Like, if they don't do it in 10 months and...
What I can do is, what I can tell them is that their approval is up until this date.
Okay.
And, and that's it. That's what I can, that's what I can do.
Well, I think you gotta put the line in the sand, because if you've given them kind of a...
That was my fear of, when they came with the original request, it's like, well, it's gonna be only three months, or we're gonna narrow it down. I know how construction goes, and I know it's gonna take a long, it could drag on. And I don't want that. But I can actually, the contract's not with us, but the approval is with us, and I can tell them, hey, you only have until the day after that.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
That's a good idea. And then please, when, when communicating that to residents will be a big thing. Please don't let us forget to communicate that. Assistant Senate manager?
Yes, we have a couple of events here in the next couple of weeks. On Wednesday, September 24th, at the Miami Springs Community Center, from 2:30 to 8:30, we have a donation of blood for childhood cancer awareness. On Wednesday, September 24th, is our second workshop for Southeast Springs. They'll be presenting here at the council chambers.
It starts at 6?
6:00 PM, yes, 6:00. It says 6:00 to 7:00, but I'm sure it might...
Oh, it's gonna be more than 7:00.
It'll be a little longer than 7:00, yes. We have Run With The Cops, which is a 1.5 mile or a 5K run, which is on October 4th. It'll be here, starting at 1401 Westward Drive. So the meet time is at 7:00 AM, so if you want to register for that. We have Miami-Dade County Commissioner, the Commissioner, Natalie Milon Orbis, will be here on Monday, October 6th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. She will have somebody, a representative from her office here, monthly, on the first Monday of every month. And then we have our Centennial Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00. I know we're in our final stages on trying to get everything accomplished there. We're less than a year away, so that's all I have from now until the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Tammy. Okay, report from the city clerk?
Yes, just to add on to Tammy's calendar list there. The next council meeting was changed from October 13th to October 6th due to the, to the holidays, so just a reminder for that. And Vice Mayor rotation is coming up soon, so September 30th will be Vice Mayor Santin's last day of Vice Mayor, and then it shifts over to Group 2 to Councilman Dion.
You're gonna start getting first-team reps now, Joseph. Okay, thank you, Erica. And then Erica, please, let's...
For the FPL?
Yeah, let's make sure that we pick a date and venue for FPL. Okay. Report from the city council. I'm gonna start us off. Just, I want to reiterate, this Wednesday, Southeast Springs, it's a workshop. It starts at 6:00. It's going to go, we're gonna have lots of things to debate. It's gonna be a lot to debate. I invite the public to come, listen, give their feedback, because we want to move forward. It's been a goal of this council to do something. This is a project that's been a long time coming, so we just want public involvement. Okay, I'm gonna start on this side. Councilman Perez Crespo.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Twice This Sweet, and I know Liz is very dedicated to her business and this, after she gets out of her regular job. So congratulate her on her 10-year anniversary. I just want to know one thing. How does Councilman Santin keep that figure? With everything that Liz deliciously bakes? And to the Councilman Santin and to Councilman Lamas, I want to wish them a milestone happy birthday. I won't ask you your age. So congratulate to them on their birthdays. I just want to mention, I went to a couple of free events this weekend. And I want to bring it back to say, we have a lot of great free community events happening, anywhere from Lunch on Leonard, which is Leonard Realty, that showcases our local restaurants, Whole 19 with the disco dance party, no cover charge. You can go dance the night away, you don't have to drink, it's all free, and it brings in people from outside the city. The Women's Club had an interactive role-playing activity called In Her Shoes for Domestic Violence, in conjunction with our community policing department. Again, free. And we had the participation of the Miami Springs Jiu-Jitsu. The Holistic Health Fair happened on Saturday at the Senior Center. On Sunday, there was a Miami Springs Trading Card Show, mostly Pokemon cards, I don't, I'm not into Pokemon, but still, free event. Packed, packed. And what the organizer of that event told me, he's a resident here, he said, we want, we want to bring in people from the outside. We want people from outside of Springs coming in, seeing what we do here, spending their money here, eating here, shopping here. That's important. I think we're an attractive city to do more events like that. I'd like to see, JC and Erica, there's a way to aggregate these events into one place on the city's webpage. We do great with the city official events.
Like a community calendar.
But a community calendar event, where we're reaching out to the civic organizations, we're reaching out to, open to the public. If we can do that, and that way, we really point everyone to our webpage to find out what's going on in the city. This Wednesday, right, we've got the Southeast Springs presentation. Please be there. And then lastly, get your Centennial pin downstairs for $15. They're also, they're selling t-shirts. Visit 100miamisprings.com for a list of all the activities, events happening related to the Centennial. And you can upload photos and stories, historical photos and stories, to the webpage. The only one that's there is one that I uploaded of what our city hall looked like in 1963. We need more, we need more community participation with our Centennial. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilor Lamas?
It was great to see the chamber full of people today for the FPL conversation that we, presentation conversation that we had. And really need that to happen for the Southeast Springs presentation on Wednesday, the workshop. So for anybody listening at home, please come by, tell your neighbors. It's really important that we get input on this, so we get some traction and really push it through. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Dion?
So a couple of things. First, congratulations to Twice This Sweet. Definitely a no-brainer for us. Couldn't say greater things about Liz Santin and her, and her family. You know what they say, behind every great man, there's a great woman. Also, I've become a fan of the Miami Springs football team, and they'll be playing a really good school, Booker T. Washington, on the 25th, Thursday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM. I'd also like to state the honor of me serving on this council. And it comes now with the Vice Mayor position coming up for me. And with that comes great responsibility. And sometimes, you know, we're gonna do some things that might not be the more popular things, but we're gonna do what's right for our residents. And with that said, I would like to also say my thoughts and prayers to the family of Charlie Kirk.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, they say behind every great man, there's a great woman rolling her eyes. That may not apply to you, but I think it applies to me.
First, I wanted to thank Councilman Dion for taking the initiative of giving Twice This Sweet their proclamation and the support from the rest of the council in a lot of ways, not just from this proclamation, but also participating and buying some of the goodies that Liz does every, every, every day and every weekend.
That's the easy part.
Yeah, that's the easy part. But either way, thank you. I'm not gonna, I think, I'm so glad that our Councilman Crespo is here helping with the Centennial and all the, you know, putting the word out there for all the community events. You know, that's always my, end of my speak is to tell everybody to get involved. So I thank you for getting involved. I really do. But I think we need to make sure that this FPL meeting that we had today here, it still seems like you're gonna have people saying, well, I get my answer, my question's answered. I think the most important thing is that we need to get this information out there. And they got from today to whenever that meeting gets set, if they sign this easement and they are thinking about retracting from this agreement, this is the time to do it. They're made it very clear here today. Go to the website, give them the information. Come to the city manager, assistant manager, city clerk. You got time, he said it again. You have time, from here to that meeting. Yes, after that meeting, you wait two months later, well, it's all on you. But we're given the opportunity right now to come up and act on it. So please, do so.
All right, thank you. And I just, I want to point out that Juan Penna stays here till the very end. He doesn't have to. Most people leave once they're items, but everything is their item. That is commitment. But at least you're getting paid. Carlos Lupe and Mike Govila, although Mike Govila gets the occasional free lunch. And, and Millie Crespo are here. Thank you guys for being the dedicated ones that sit here to listen to our crazy rantings. All right, that being said, we adjourn this meeting at 10:24. 10:21. Yeah, that's true.